Welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with our invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Tyrone Smith here is the pastor at South Lindsay Baptist Church. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Shadid if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Will you pray with me? Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity, Father, that you've given us to call upon you to begin our day. And, Father, as the council meets today, that you'll be with each person that's here and their families that is represented here. Father, we thank you for an opportunity to be able to do business and to let you to guide our hearts and our spirits. And, Father, that you'll guide us in such a way that will bring pleasure to you. Thank you for this opportunity that you give us, Father, to be able to call upon you. Father, we so many times look to you for so many things, but, Father, most of all, just allow you to be in our lives, guiding our lives step by step and moment by moment. Thank you for this opportunity. And, Father, as the council meets, that you'll clear their minds, that you'll help them to be able to think clearly, to be able to talk about things, Father, in such a way that will bring honor to you. Thank you for these that have come, Father, to be able to hear exactly what goes on. And, Father, that you'll bless each one in this room, that you'll protect them, that you'll guide them during this day, that, Father, they'll be able to go back home safely. Again, we thank you for an opportunity to be able to be here to call upon you, Father. We just ask your blessings, words in Christ, and then we ask it. Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the meeting to order and move to item three on the agenda. These are a series of appointments. I'll entertain a motion for the four appointments.
One, second.
All right. Comments or questions? All right, cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Move on to item four. It's the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item four A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for October 11th, and item four B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for October 4th.
Second.
All right. Comments on the journal? Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. And, item five is request for uncontested continuances.
Mr. Mayor, on page 11, under unsecured items, item eight H, one, item, item A, 2415 South Broadway, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item E, 7509 Knight Lake Drive, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item G, 4400 South Walker, we ask that that be stricken, to rework for additional violations. Item L, 1513 Southwest 33rd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Moving to page 12 on item R, 1137 Northwest 102nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item S, 1201 Northwest 102nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And then on page 14, on claims for denial, item eight P, one D and E, one D and E, we ask that those be, Councilman Kelly's request that those be deferred for two weeks until November 1st.
All right. Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, let's recess the council meeting convened as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are five items. Comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. Pass unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA convened as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are three items. Motion to say, any comments or questions here?
Your Honor, just a quick question. On the number A, which is relates to the downtown area, how much of that funding is from the bid? There's $163,000 and they list three source of funds. I wonder how much of that was from the bid? What percentage?
I believe it's all from the bid.
All 100%?
But let's verify that.
And so the other two items are just there because source of funds?
I think that's our portion of funding the bid.
Okay.
Brett Bryant's here and he's going to answer that question.
All, these are additional services that are provided by DOJ K C in addition to the bid amount, and all of these funds are funded through the general fund, through a general fund transfer to the Public Property Authority.
Okay, so the source of funds statement on here is not quite correct then?
The source of funds is they were actually, the bill's being paid out of the PPA, but the originating source of the funds is from the general fund to the PPA.
Okay, so there's no bid money?
No, sir.
Thank you. I think. And on C, this is for a market study, market demand study for the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority golf courses? And what are they studying exactly? Market demand for what?
Bob, you want to come in and address that?
I'm Rob List of the Parks and Recreation Department, and they have two issues to look at. One will be the demand of golf in the metropolitan area, and the second will be the demand for event services in the metropolitan area, and both of those will relate to design of, a possible design of new clubhouses.
Okay, that's what I thought. Great of that. Thank you. Bob. Rob, the question was, is this for all the courses?
Yeah. The two courses that will be, have possible clubhouse, new clubhouses would be Lincoln and Early Wine, but when we study the metropolitan area, then all of the courses will be involved as far as their participation in them, that demand. Does that help?
So there's some pieces that you're studying, Rob. One is for the clubhouses in terms of events to be held possibly.
It's for the remodel of the clubhouses, which would be Lincoln and Early Wine, but to get the demand, that all the area that these people affect as far as recruiting, recruiting golfers, it'll be the metropolitan area that'll be just studied, not just...
Okay, and that part of the demand study will be the demand for golf itself?
Yes, and event, possible events.
It's two parts, but one is for the event centers. I understand that, the clubhouses at Early Wine and Lincoln.
Right.
And then the others relates just to the demand to play golf out there?
Yes, and both of those, there'll be a little estimate of what the golf will be at those two courses.
Are they, will they be charged with making recommendations in reference to any structure or capital improvements on the other golf courses? And I understand that as far as Lincoln and Early Wine, that the, I think the priority is to address the issue of the clubhouses on both of those courses, but in reference to the other courses, are they charged with being able to submit suggestions and recommendations so a year later, we don't have to have another independent study to address the issue, maybe like it at Stewart Golf Course?
There's two areas here. One, we ask them to give us any comments they have on being able to tap possible revenue that we're not accessing right now. And secondly, if there are questions that come up in that process, we've built in there a per hour rate that we can do that additional study without creating a new contract or doing a new proposal.
All right. Thanks, Rob. Ready to vote on the PPA? I cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA. We convene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right, any individual consideration?
Your Honor, I have a couple of minor questions. A, I, R, and Q.
A, I, R, and Q.
J.
J. All right. All right, Pat, you want to get started with item A?
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. I just a minor question. Why does the airport need four-wheel-drive SUVs? Three of them.
We'll get somebody here to answer that. I assume it's for their operation sides of things, for all weather access, like we had during storms over the last, but we'll get somebody in to answer that specifically.
Then, who, who did the initial review and approval of this? Was that the airport?
Yes.
Commission?
Airport comes up with their needs and desires on that. Craig, can you address that?
I'm sorry, I have a question on the way in.
Four-wheel-drive vehicles for the airport?
Yes. Why? Why do they need those?
Why do they need three four-wheel-drive SUVs?
Basically, it was for several of their operations managers, for their operational manager and for the director, that those vehicles suited their needs better because they get into snow situations, and there's sometimes situations they have to get off ground, you know, off the airport, off hard surface, and so there's times that they need that. They didn't need like a full-size SUV, so they went with a smaller one, needed the four-wheel-drive capability of those vehicles at times.
Thank you.
All right, and item I?
Item I. I just was curious. This is for a retail study, and it's going to be in appropriate areas of the city? And what are the appropriate areas?
Councilman, we don't, we don't know that yet. We know whether existing, they'll be evaluating what the existing retail offerings are in the community and determining where we should be focusing our efforts in support, in terms of supporting retail going into the future. So it's a consolidate-
They're looking to the consultant to tell us what is appropriate.
They will tell us that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and item R?
And then R, this is some sign changes, an allocation out of our general fund, general obligation bond funds, and it's a result of a federal rule. Did the federal money, federal contribute any money to this?
No, sir.
So this was an unfunded mandate?
Yes, sir.
Was it listed as an unfunded mandate? Unfunded mandate? We, we keep sort of track of those? Do you come up with some kind of total?
We have from time to time. I don't think we necessarily have a running list. We've been asked to provide that from time to time, but this would fall in that category.
When we did the '07 bond issue, that was prior to the time that this particular rule was in effect. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and item Q?
Item Q, I just had a curious, this is for a particular project, DC 0261, and it seems like it covers the entire city, and I was curious what kind of project this was.
Councilmen, it's actually our unit price contracts for citywide drainage improvements, and so this is a million dollars to not to exceed for the next year.
And that one project number is sort of a general project number to look at?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ed, item J?
Just a comment on something that's troubled me for some time. This has to do with HUD funds. It just occurs to me that we are almost completely dependent on federal dollars for our social services. We, in this, we had to, for a variety of reasons, we had to defund the Latino Community Development Agency. We were able to go to Mr. Couch, who was able to procure $40,000 from general funds. In the city council budget, the combined total expenditures for social services, driving, alcohol addiction, homelessness, mental health, everything, is about $300,000 out of a $900 million budget. I very much enjoyed your prayer this morning, sir. We generally invoke Jesus's name each morning, each Tuesday morning during our prayers, but whether it's Jesus or any of the major religions, I don't, I don't think they would sign off on spending $300,000 out of $900 million on social services. And in these days, with record-breaking sales tax revenues, I would hope that we could look at increasing funding for some of these agencies. Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions on the consent docket?
I have one. On M, this is in reference to tennis and I assume it's-
Tennis court resurfaces, yes.
Tennis and track, or is it just a tennis?
Well, that's the name of the company. If you read the item, the company is Merritt Tennis and Track Systems, or the ward is for a contract for tennis court resurface. So the track is the name of the company that's doing the work. They just have track in their, in their name.
But all of the wards, wherever there's a tennis court, is...
Well, again, this is a contract that could be used anywhere in the city. We've specifically identified that the need to resurface some of the tennis courts at Early Wine and at the Will Rogers Tennis Center, that the contract could be used anywhere in the city.
So if I identify a tennis court in Ward seven, then under this contract, is this just to identify the need to repair the, the...
This gives us the...
The course or the tennis course, or is this just to?
The Parks Department has gone through and identified some courts that need to be resurfaced. We do this in more of a general contract, so that if another court is identified that needs some work, it could be, it could be expanded to cover that. So the answer is yes, it could be used anywhere in the city, and that's why it's listed as such.
And that's the amount? As I understand it, is this...
The, the contracts for 50, or for $48,000.
$48,000?
Yeah.
But that's not to do the work, that's just to identify?
No, 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 no. That's, that's to do the resurfaces.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, what we're doing here is in the past, when we've had courts that needed to be resurfaced, we've come to you with a bid to resurface just those three courts. Now we're coming to you with a contract that will allow us to have a contractor to resurface courts as necessary through the year.
It's anticipated that this contract will resurface about 10 courts.
All right, ready to vote the consent docket? We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Nothing on the concurrence today, so we move on to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. We start with a series of zoning cases, the first of which is in Ward six. The address is 1724 Northwest First Street. It's currently R2 medium-low-density residential district, and it would become an I2 moderate industrial district. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this item today?
David Lyde, Matrix Commercial Real Estate, representing the applicant. At a block south, you've got a restaurant supply company, basically dispersing at the seams, purchased this property, going to build a storage warehouse.
All right. Is there any, Bob, this gets to planning?
Yes, there's no problem with this one.
All right. How about a motion then in Meg's absence? Cast your votes on item 8A1. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
On item 8A2, this is an item in Ward seven. The address is 13002 North Kelly Avenue. It's currently AA agricultural and another one single-family residential district, and it would become a new planned unit development. Skip?
I'm sorry. And I would, I would ask that we move it?
We have a motion in a second on item 8A2.
Bob, you got the easement on it yet?
Passed unanimously. Do we need the emergency on this item? Do we need the easement?
Not asked for.
Okay, do you have the easement? All right, so we're good to go?
Yes.
All right, let's move on to item 8A3 then. It's also in Ward seven. The address is 13940 Broadway Extension. It's O2 General Office and C3 Community Commercial District, and it would become a planned unit development. Skip?
And it's consistent with the other development in the area, and I would ask that we move this.
All right, how about a second? We're voting on item 8A3. Any comments or questions? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On item 8A4, it's back in Ward seven, 11800 North I-35 Service Road. It's AA agricultural, and it would become a planned unit development. Skip?
Also ask that we move this.
Okay, how about a second? Comments or questions on item 8A4? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On item 8A5, it's in Ward four. The address is 6309 South Bryant Avenue. It's I2 moderate industrial, and it would become a planned unit development. Pete?
Are there any protestors here to speak on this? This is just a routine matter for the landfill, and I'm going to move approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second. We're voting on item 8A5. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A6 is in Ward three. The address is 3724 West Park Place. It's a simplified planning and development and would become a new spud. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant, Ken Smith, is here. If he'd come forward. Has anybody signed up on this? Okay, just a brief history. This was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission. Ken has done quite a bit of work in modifying this. One of the things that needs to be included, there was a site drawing included that showed a sidewalk along the northern part of this project, and Ken has agreed to put that sidewalk in, and we have that particular commitment here that was given to me by Bob Teener this morning. Ken has worked out with all the protestors and has approval from them in written form that they are now in agreement with this project as it's been designed. So unless the council has any specific questions, I move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on item 8A6. Any comments or questions?
With the, with the sidewalk commitment included in there?
All right, the motion is with the sidewalk commitment?
Yes.
Good to go? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A7 is in Ward two. The address is 1000 Northwest 37th Street. It's in an HP Historical Preservation District, and it would become a new simplified planning and development. Ed?
Has anybody signed up to speak? Is anybody here? I just, I'd just like to say later, we're going to talk about vacant and abandoned buildings. This is textbook urban infill and renovation of what we need in Oklahoma City. This is an apartment complex that sat empty for a couple of decades, dilapidated. It's being renovated with an additional multi-family dwelling next to it, and I'm just very excited about it. So I move for approval.
Good. Does sound like what we need.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions on item 8A7? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On item 8B, we have a couple of items here that the police chief has introduced. This is the final hearing for these, and as I mentioned, it originates from the police department. We've already been briefed on this. Does anyone need Chief City to come in? Are we ready to go on item 8B and C? Okay, how about a motion then on item 8B? All right, cast your votes. Item 8B passed unanimously. And how about item 8C? All right, cast your votes on 8C. Passed unanimously. On item 8D, this is a public hearing. Has to do with the Stockyards Business Improvement District. This is our annual look at the assessment roll and to confirm our support. Any comments or questions on this item? All right, cast your votes on item 8D. Passed unanimously. And item 8E is the companion item to this, and will we need to vote on the emergency on this too? Okay, let's first vote on item 8E. How about a motion there? Larry, do you want to say something? Okay, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And then we need a motion on the emergency? Cast your votes, and the emergency passes.
On the, so in case Mr. Smith, he would like the emergency also. He has a construction people ready to go in two weeks to start on that.
All right, is this items 8A6 on West Park Place?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm sorry to-
So Larry's making a motion on the emergency on item 8A6. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, cast your votes.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Emergency passes unanimously. All right, and let's see, we just voted on item 8E, so that puts us to item 8F. It's an item from the Traffic Commission about no parking anytime in that requested section of Grand Boulevard. Ed, you okay with this? All right, how about a motion then? All right, we're casting a vote on item 8F. Anyone here wishing to speak on this item? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8G is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8G? All right, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously, which puts us to item 8H, which is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8H? All right, we're good to go. Cast your votes on item 8H. Passed unanimously. Item 8I is a public hearing. Has to do with a series of budgets amendments. Fairly routine.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is generally the end-of-year budget amendment that we do to clean up our end-of-year accounts, and then because of the summer weather experience that we had, the Water Department had a number of expenses, additional expenses that ran from electrical costs to overtime costs to chemical costs, and also materials costs for the water main breaks, and so this is a budget amendment to accommodate that. Now they also have, because of the high water sales, additional revenue that will help offset that. And then the third major issue has to do with the fund balance discussion we had and the $8 million that we talked about a couple of weeks ago, to move that into the property funds.
Okay, how about a motion? We have a motion in a second. We're voting on item 8I. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8J is a revocable permit. This is to hold the 2011 Oklahoma Ultra Running Championships. This is in the Lake Hefner area. I was trying to figure out how far they're going to run. We'll see it in here anywhere, because there's a lot of-
There's two tracks. One is on asphalt, one's on the old thing. And I had some questions on this one. Will this closed, parked, anybody, all public use during the time that the runners out there?
We'll go, Wendell, back in here to answer then.
Okay. The second question is, will any public streets be involved in this particular activity?
No question.
Is it Beth Creek Park? This is the Oklahoma Ultra Running Championship?
Yes, sir.
Will the park be closed then to all other uses?
No, park won't be closed. However, the trail will be very active with the running event. It could still be used, but it will be very active with the running event. Some will run as much as 24 hours. You may have noticed that they will be running on both the hard-surface track as well as the single-track bicycle track.
And will bicyclists be allowed out there?
No.
Good. That's, I think that was a sort of a hazard to have bicyclists running on that same track. The second question, Wendell, will there be any public roads impacted by this?
Well, the public roads going into the park, parking is not allowed alongside the road. The parking will all be dedicated to the parking lot. There won't be any roads, city streets impacted by this event. It's entirely within the park.
Okay, that's a common question, was is there no city streets? Okay, that's a common question, was it, so there's no city streets impacted. There's no runners out on the city streets, so we won't have streets closed to traffic at all.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, how about a motion, Pat, on item 8J?
Move the item.
Comments or questions on this event?
I just have one question. Is the, the standard, uh, deposit, um, like, the actual charge, $185 to, to have the whole park for 24 hours, is that the standard fee that we?
Yes, sir, it is. Those are ordinance set fees.
You reserve the whole park for 24 hours for $185?
Yes, sir, our fees are, um, very affordable.
All right, cast your votes on item 8J, passed unanimously.
Just one other comment on the, on Mr. Councilman Kelly's, uh, remark. There is additional $500 available for repairing any damage to the park facilities that were available.
Yes, a maintenance deposit.
Maintenance deposit.
And they have to have insurance and a lot of other things.
Oh, yes, sir.
All right, move on to item 8K. This is our resolution on Emsa that we've discussed voluminously over the last few months.
I, I prefer to say that we, we, uh, we're judicious in our, in our setting of the issue. We did, we did, we've had workshops on it and several present, I'm sorry.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to say just a few words. Uh, I, um, intend to vote against this resolution, uh, in support of FIRE taking over emergency medical transport. I believe it's cheaper for the taxpayer. I believe it affords a higher quality of care for the citizens and patients. Uh, I am concerned, uh, as I look at the rest of the country, that the major, overwhelming majority of citizens of the United States are served by a FIRE-based sys, uh, system. The top nine cities in the, uh, country are served by a FIRE-based system. The public utility model is, uh, going away. In medicine, I don't like to be the first or last to do anything, and as I see this model going away, I'm concerned as the citizens of Oklahoma City are in, as in an outlier position. Uh, I don't think that, um, well, I, I think there's some things that we haven't discussed in, in all of our judicious, uh, discussions, um, and I just wanna talk about that very briefly. Number one is that, uh, we do not know. Nobody in this room, nobody can tell us when we are at level zero status currently. Level zero status means that a, that 911 call comes in, and there's no ambulance, there's no Emsa ambulance available to serve that citizen. There's, it is impossible, the system doesn't track it. I've asked Mr. Williamson, he indicates that the computer system is incapable of tracking that data and telling us how many times we're at level zero. The implication, I'll, I'll get to the implication in a second, but secondly, the, the arguments that were made last week didn't really have to do with cost or, uh, patient care. It had to do with the fact that we couldn't get out of the trust, and that we were, basically, this wasn't a window of opportunity, that we were locked in. Uh, I, I have, uh, concerns about that, if that's the reason that we're making this decision. Uh, I think that I would like the Municipal Counselor's Office to look at the operational, uh, requirements of Emsa and whether they're meeting them, and whether failure to meet them allows us to get out of the Emsa trust. I believe that we have, we have an agreement where Emsa is supposed to be at the scene, uh, within nine minutes 90% of the time, but they, this system, uh, allows them to exclude 7% of all calls. Thousands and thousands of calls are just excluded from that formula for any unforeseen spikes in call volume over the previous year, for inclement weather, or just to catch all other factors outside of the contractor's control. In March of this year, for example, we threw out 16% of the calls, and yet, Emsa was only there in nine minutes 74% of the time. I, I cannot believe that that is within, that that is meeting the operational, uh, requirements of the trust. And so I would ask Kenny if you can research and explain to me whether that is in compliance, and if they're not in compliance, whether we can get out of the trust, and whether we can get out of the trust with our assets. The, uh, uh, the FIRE-based system is cheaper. One, one thing we have not talked about is, uh, the size of the city, and I, I use the word sprawl, and I apologize to Pat and, and Pete who considered a pejorative term, but it's one word, and everybody knows what I'm talking about. I asked, the first time we talked about it, Mr. Williamson, why is it that the cost, the rate of cost increase in the Western Division is increasing three and a half times the Eastern Division? Is it partly, partially due to sprawl? He said, no, it's 100% due to sprawl. That is the reason that costs are escalating so fast in Oklahoma City and the Western Division. Uh, a, a profit-based system with Paramedics Plus trying to cover 621 square miles, the public utility model is especially ill-suited for that kind of geographic size, and I think when you take 2, 2.7 ambulance service hours in the Western Division to achieve the same production as two hours in the Eastern Division, and it costs almost $100 per transport more in the Western Division, it makes more sense for FIRE to assume that. FIRE is gonna have peripheral-based stations. They can house ambulances at those peripheral systems, to have Emsa trying to, uh, drive around and cover an ever-expanding city, because I think the, the peripheral development is going to get worse, and it's going to be more and more difficult for Emsa to cover that size, so it's gonna be more and more expensive. So in, in cost, one thing we haven't talked about in cost is that I think Paramedics Plus and Emsa's costs are going to increase, uh, continue to increase at this very high unsustainable rate. Uh, I think one, one, I think how this plays out is we've, we, there seems to be consensus, we're gonna consolidate dispatch. We don't want FIRE to go out on the non-priority-one calls. We've, we've, we've established last week, it's unsustainable to increase 6,000 calls for FIRE per year, so we're looking at decreasing the number of calls FIRE goes out a year at 20,000 calls per year. So now that's 20,000 times a year that somebody calls 911 and FIRE's not going, only Emsa's going. But what if they're at level zero? We don't know how many times they're at level zero. Talking to many, many firefighters, they say it's happening eight, nine, 10 times a week, but nobody knows, because we can't, we're not tracking that data. So I think how this is gonna play out is FIRE's gonna go out on 20,000 less calls a year. People with, people, their child or loved one's gonna have a nosebleed, a broken arm, they're gonna be sitting there for 30, 40, 50 minutes, an hour. Right now, what happens is FIRE goes there first and sits with them, and then Emsa comes, and we pay $300 for the transport, whether they have insurance or not, after FIRE's been sitting with them. Well, now FIRE's not gonna be sitting with them for all that time, so they're gonna be sitting there until Emsa can get there, and there's gonna be public discontent, and we're gonna hear more complaints, and it's gonna be, uh, untenable, and then, Paramedics Plus is gonna say we need more money. Emsa's gonna say we need more money, there's increased cost. Uh, I, I don't buy at all the, 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 the report last week, the billing estimates indicating that FIRE would have to, to contract out at 6% to do a revenue collection. In my practice, I have a two-physician practice, that's the rate I get, 6%. When you, when you're talking about collecting 22 million, the more you collect, the, the lower the, uh, the rate that these company, third parties would charge. I think people would be falling over themselves to get a $22 million contract, and I think that rates it at about 4%. Uh, I think that that's, that's another half million dollars a year. Uh, I'm, I'm frankly surprised that it costs Emsa 4% or one, more than 1.1 million, uh, to collect. I just, I'm, I'm trying to figure out the staff and the salaries, and I don't see how you spend that much money. I think you can get it done for much less. The argument was made that the financial case for the city withdrawing depends on the city obtaining ambulances' equipment at little or no cost. A, that assumes that we can't break the trust, and we'll, we'll hear from Kenny on that. Second, these, these capital expenditures, these ambulances are, are run hard. I mean, they're replaced as, as often as every three years. If we vote to go to a FIRE-based system, we don't start for two years. Many of these ambulances are, are outdated or out of service already. So what, I'm not sure why it depends on us getting the ambulances at little or no cost. Let's think about what happens if we go to a FIRE-based system. The surrounding communities are almost certainly going to contract with Oklahoma City. We already have mutual aid agreements. We don't put Oklahoma City on, on this side of the ambulance to avoid inflaming or offending anyone. Uh, and we, I, I just don't see the village or the Mustang saying, we're, we want conflict with the city of Oklahoma City. We're going to seize your assets, we're gonna seize your ambulances. But you, we need each other, and I, and I just don't see them seizing the capital, uh, I don't think. So then, let's say, let's say we, we have a regional agreement here, Tulsa's not gonna, they seize all these ambulances that they can't staff? I don't see that happening either. Uh, the, Emsa's argument for why FIRE's contention that they're gonna save half million dollars to a million dollars a year is that they would need nine additional dispatchers and eight additional material technicians. I just don't buy it. Why would we consolidate dispatch if FIRE need nine additional dispatchers? Why do we need eight additional material technicians? We, we, many of these ambulances will be housed at FIRE-based systems. They can restock the ambulances, uh, when, when nothing's going on. But we talk about money, money, money. We need to talk about quality of care. Realize that, that nothing is going to, the, the medical director has said he can work equally well with FIRE or Emsa, so there's no change there. What, what happens in, in terms of saving lives is how fast you get there. That's, that's what determines cardiac outcomes and saving lives. That's being done by FIRE. FIRE's getting there 83% of the time first, and, and those lives are still gonna be saved. Uh, I think that the emergency medicine literature indicates that transfer of care from one provider to another in a short encounter is the most likely time to create error. Firefighters are all hazard responders. There's no need, if you have a motor vehicle accident with, with gas and oil, that they can, they can deal with that, and then they can tra, stay with the patient and go straight to the hospital. This dealing with the motor vehicle accident, stabilizing the patient, and then transferring it to somebody else and explaining the history and what's going on with the patient, that doesn't make sense. That's where errors take, take place. You maintain continuity of care by having FIRE extract them from the car, take them right to the hospital. Uh, eliminating two separate agencies responding at high speed with sirens to the same emergency minimizes disruptions in traffic and the risk of motor vehicle accidents. I think you have, if you have FIRE doing everything, you don't have to, you don't have this duplication of services, and you have, uh, you can have even better response times. You can have FIRE getting there even faster to, to more people, and that's what's gonna save lives. The, the public is largely unaware of what's happening. In terms of outcome, every minute, your chance of survival, your, how much brain damage there is, if your heart is not refusing the brain, is different whether somebody gets there at six minutes or eight minutes. Right now, that's, the, the public is not aware of that. If FIRE takes over and it's more efficient, they can get there faster, and you're gonna have better clinical outcomes for, uh, our citizens. Uh, I, I think I'm on the right side of history. If this is an 8-1 or 7-1 vote, I have absolutely no problem with that. I think this is, uh, I think this is what's best for the citizens of Oklahoma City. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Any other comments or questions, or we need a second on Councilman Ryan's motion?
I'll second.
All right, ready to vote? Cast your votes on item 8K, passes by a vote of seven to one. Run to item 8L, and I understand we do need executive session on this item? All right, how about a motion then to move item 8L to executive session? Cast your votes. Item moves to executive session. Item 8M, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
How about a motion as such? Cast your votes on 8M, passed unanimously. Item 8N, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
Cast your votes, passed unanimously. And item 8O, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
Okay, cast your votes. And then aisle four, those items are moved to executive session, which puts us to item P, which is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8P?
Yes, and as Mr. Gross comes up, as you, as you consider this claim, it's gonna be on the Edgemere Park Preservation, I would, uh, point out that we've written this as a conflict in fact, conflict of facts, though based on the presentation and our memo, if you find the city employee has done anything negligent in damaging the sprinkler system when he was moving the snow, you can approve this claim, so it's, it's really up to the council.
All right, and, uh, we welcome two-time Councilman Eric Gross to the, to the chambers. Good morning, Eric.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. It's always a pleasure to be here. Um, I want to, uh, introduce, uh, our current president of Edgemere Association, EPPI. We are, as you know, an historic preservation neighborhood, uh, situated between Walker and, uh, Robinson, between Northwest 36th and Northwest 30th. I've lived there since 1974. Uh, we're a very active neighborhood. Uh, we raise a lot of money, and we spend a lot of money. We do a lot to keep up our parks, our medians, uh, we even help support Edgemere School. We are here today to press our case for a $300 claim, and I'd like you to hear from our neighborhood president, uh, and then I will wrap it up with some comments on the legalities of the situation. Also, Denise Waters is here to answer questions about the manner in which this case was handled by the city, and also has some photographs of the damage that was done, should you wish to see them. Alan Brown.
Thanks, Eric. Morning.
Morning.
And I've lived in Edgemere Park since 1981, so it was 30 years this year. Um, I'll just provide a few facts. I'd like to just give you some background information. A board of trustees realizes a small amount, but it's kind of precedent. As Eric said, we've done a lot of, of improvements in the public areas, the park, and medians, uh, and other areas right of ways. Uh, most recently, raised over $100,000, including some money from ODOT to improve, uh, uh, make improvements in the park and the area at 36th and Robinson that's in, that's in question. Uh, and, yeah, we have a, uh, agreement in place with ODOT to, uh, maintain that area, and we have a liability policy to, you know, in case we cause damage. Uh, we also have an agreement with, uh, through Adopt a Park with the city to, uh, same type of agreement, in our opinion, releases the city from damage if we, you know, uh, caused some damage, but kind of not the other way around. The city, uh, damaged the sprinkler system, uh, and right now, we're, if the city doesn't pay for it, we're on the hook. We've already, actually, already made the repairs, so we're requesting, um, uh, repayment of that amount. Uh, if the city, whoever caused the damage, doesn't pay it, you know, we're, we're kind of stuck with it, so, um, we appreciate your consideration on that. Any questions?
Can you give me more specifics about what you believe happened?
Uh, there, last February, a, uh, snowplow that was operating on that corner, um, went over the curb and basically damaged a sprinkler system. Uh, Denise Waters could give you more detailed information, including photographs that, uh, that she took, so, uh, and that's been a while, and the claim, uh, you know, is, uh, has been submitted for a while, but we made the repairs last spring.
All right. Tina, you wanna tell us about the city on, as I say?
I should probably have Denise Waters to circulate these photographs, Mayor.
Okay. Hold on, Tina, sorry. Tina, you wanna come up and tell us about your work on this case?
Hi. Tina Hughes, I'm with the City Attorney's Office. Uh, this claim is for damage in a kind of a, uh, triangular median close to, on, on Northwest 36th Street, pretty close to I-235. Uh, my understanding is there's nothing in that median of grass. There are no beds right there. There is a bed there? Okay. Uh, Edgemere Park entered into agreements with Oklahoma City Beautiful and another one with ODOT. The real property where the sprinkler system is in this case, the one that was injured, is, uh, is the property of Oklahoma Department of Transportation or the State of Oklahoma. Uh, we can confirm that we had a snowplow out there on February 1st, which would be about the right time. Uh, we would, uh, point out that there were 11.8 inches of snow that fell that, right around there, and, um, I'm sure that the curb was not visible for the snowplow. Uh, we can't confirm whether that was done or not, uh, and I don't believe they have a witness to whether that is what happened or not, although that's a reasonable assumption, so. We write it up as a, uh, dispute of facts.
Okay, so, so Tina, from your point of view, there's just no proof that the city did it, but these pictures kind of lead us to believe whatever it is we think the pictures lead us to believe. Is that pretty much your, your, your point?
You can draw your own conclusions, yes.
Okay. Uh, any comments or questions from council, from those that have seen the pictures, Gary?
Was this one sprinkler head?
Was this one sprinkler head?
Five.
Five. Chief.
Yeah, I think the legal question has to do... Or some of the back and forth has to do with the contract with Oklahoma City Beautiful. Can you just elaborate on...
Yeah, there are actually two contracts covering this area. To begin at the beginning, of course, there's a lot to be said about the law, and I can get to that, but unless I thought Dr. Shadid could move this to be approved, and I saw votes necessary to sustain that, but if I don't see that, then I've got to go through all this. ODOT gave us some money when they did the interchange at Northwest 36th and I-40. We had a dispute with them about how that interchange would be designed, and we resolved that. And they gave us $40,000 for landscaping, which we then used. If you're driving northwest, North Robinson, and you get to Northwest 36th and you're going to turn to the left, you're going to see a lovely landscaped area. Well, we did that. We have a maintenance agreement with ODOT. We also have an agreement with Oklahoma City Beautiful, but that really doesn't control this case. Our agreement with ODOT provides that we will maintain the sprinkler system. Now, who owns the sprinkler system? Well, when this case first came up, that was my first question. In fact, I wrote a long email about it. I talked to Dan Brummett about it, then I sent a copy of the email to Dan Brummett and to my colleagues in the neighborhood, and here's what I concluded. The sprinkler system is affixed to the realty, so logically, it probably belongs to ODOT. But we have the contractual responsibility to maintain it. I therefore contend that we have a beneficial interest in that sprinkler system. It benefits our neighborhood, and we have a financial obligation toward it. If we have a beneficial interest in the property, then we have a right to make a claim for the damage to the property. So I don't have a whole lot of problems with standing here. I mean, with the issue, the legal issue of standing. I think we have standing to make the claim. The facts are not certain to the city. There was a snowstorm. The city does not know with precision the date upon which the snowplow came. I think that's admitted. What is certain is that the snowplow did the damage. You've seen the photographs of that. The city's memo, the memo from the municipal counselor discusses negligence. I don't want to go into that in too many details, but, you know, the textbook definition of negligence has four aspects: duty, breach, cause, and damage. One of the first things you learn in law school. Duty, breach, cause, damage. In this case, obviously, the city has a duty not to damage or destroy other people's property. That's just a common law statutory duty. If the city does damage someone else's property, then that duty is breached. And if there's damage, and the damage can be linked to the breach, there's causation, and so you have all four elements. The city cites a section of the Governmental Tort Claims Act, which of course is the statute under which this claim is filed, and the city contends, well, it's exempt in situations where snow or ice cause the loss, which reminds me of the old axiom in football, that the ground can't cause a fumble. Well, snow and ice can't cause a loss in and of itself, and in this case, it was not the snow or the ice that caused the loss, it was the snowplow. Whoever was operating the snowplow wasn't careful, and therefore, the damage was done. The city admittedly sees a conflict in the evidence, and that conflict in the evidence vests this council with discretion to do the right thing. Here's one other doctrine that applies, and that is the ancient common law doctrine of "race ipse loquitur." That means the thing speaks for itself, and "race ipse" applies in situations where a party has the sole control of the instrumentality that does the damage and where the damage is not ordinarily done without negligence. In this case, the city had sole control of the snowplow that did the damage. Sprinkler heads don't get cut off or damaged except when someone is negligent, unless it's done intentionally, and of course, that's not the case here. Now, what should have happened here, quite frankly, is that when the damage was done, the city should have come to my neighborhood. It's not hard to figure out who's in charge, who's present, and said, "We damaged your sprinkler, and we want to fix it." That is the kind of partnership we expect to have with this city. The city encourages neighborhood associations such as mine. It encourages the kind of historical preservation zoning that we have. If the city damages someone else's property, it shouldn't take a process like this to make it right. The city should just stand up and say, "We're going to send somebody out to fix it." And this is not the only claim. You'll be hearing another one involving mowing equipment and our lampposts. That will save that for another day. The council has discretion whether or not to approve this claim, and it seems to me that it's the right thing to do so. Alan and Denise and I should never have to spend our time to come down here and plead with the city, who we regard as our partner in developing and sustaining a great neighborhood, and plead for $300. I ask that you do the right thing. The city did the damage, and the city should pay for it. And the reason I'm here, incidentally, is because I'm concerned about the precedential value of this case. I don't want to see a public policy in the city where the city just says, "Well, we can do this kind of damage and make an excuse that it was the snow or the ice or something," and we can do that every winter, and whoever's responsible for the damaged crop, they'll just have to pay for it. Well, I mean, it's only $300, and... But at the same time, there's a principle involved here, and there's precedent involved here. So we think the right thing to do is to pay the claim and admonish the people with the snowplows to be more careful in the future. Thank you.
I'm also concerned with the presidential value, and that's exactly why I wouldn't automatically just move this for approval and not have this discussion, because it goes beyond $300. It's the implications for the city. And we just debated in the last month a similar case where there was damage to a vehicle by what was presumed to be a garbage truck, but we're not sure. There were no witnesses, and in that case, we voted against reimbursing the owner of that vehicle. So it's... This is not being in a vacuum. There are other similar cases that have been debated here in recent past, and it goes beyond just $300. It's what is... What is going to happen in the future when there's one foot of snow on the ground and you can't see the curb? I think the other issue, I mean, that we've discussed that hasn't been discussed today is the contract, which I don't think it applies, but there is language that absolves the city from any responsibility. Can you talk about... And that's the Oklahoma City Beautiful contract.
Yes, that's in the Oklahoma City Beautiful contract, and we took a second look at that. It was in the original memo, but we took another look at that, and by its terms, that only covers a flowerbed.
Right.
So we excluded that as applying to this particular claim, because this is outside the flowerbed. The sprinkler system was really installed pursuant to their agreement with ODOT. And I agree with Mr. Groves that they do have standing to apply for a claim.
Well, I'm going to move for approval. I mean, looking at the photograph, it does go over the curb by quite a bit, but I do appreciate the discussion, and I think it's worthy to have the discussion, and so I'm going to move for... How would I say this? I'm going to move...
Yeah, what we would do, we need to vote on the other items and then vote on that item separately.
Okay.
So why don't we first take a motion on item A, B, D, and E?
D and E have been deferred.
You're correct. D and E have been deferred, so we're really just voting on item 8P-1A and B first. So we have a motion and a second on that, and this is to deny those two claims. Cast your votes, and those claims are denied. Now, Ed, you want to make a motion on item 8P-1C?
You just need to move to approve it.
So I want to move to approve it, which would result in the city reimbursing Edgemere Park $300. I move to approve.
All right. We have a second on that motion. All right.
Your Honor.
Yes.
May I ask a question, or a comment, really? And it's really Mr. Groves' comment that the person driving the snowplow wasn't careful. I find that hard for you to make that statement, not seeing the individual drive, and whether it's a matter of the ice entering into the fact that it slid up upon the grounds or some other reason. I don't know how you can make a statement that you didn't... That you believe the driver was not being careful in carrying out his duties.
It's an inference from the facts, councilman. That's what we would infer, but...
Well, have you ever driven on icy roads?
Yes, sir.
Have you ever slipped? I mean, the vehicle that you're driving?
Yes, sir.
Would you say you were not being careful?
Depends on how fast I was going, but...
Well, I'm bringing up the same point. Unless you saw the individual and he was being careless, how could you make the statement that he wasn't being careful?
Because the damage speaks for itself, because if you look at the photographs, you can see that it's way over the median, and I think the driver should know where the median is, in my opinion.
Possibly, but at 2:00 in the morning with limited visibility, with a foot of snow on the ground, it's difficult to ascertain whether that was... He was negligent or not. We have very few instances where our drivers have actually...
Well...
...caused any damage. It's possible he was negligent. It's possible that he was working with the conditions that were at hand. We really don't know the answer to that.
You know, a couple of months or two ago, and I can't recall the exact date, we turned down a request for some payment because there was no definitive proof that the city did it. There were indications that the city did it, there was no definitive proof. Here, we have nobody who actually saw the snowplow do this damage. And we're assuming that it did it, but a big truck driving over that median could have done a similar kind of damage, and that's not unlikely, given the conditions of the road and the snow on the ground. And I just have a problem approving this based on the ones we've turned down that were similarly cited, and that there was nobody who actually saw the incident take place.
Okay.
But as the memo points out, the city does recognize that its snowplow was in the area. I mean, if you read the legal memo prepared by the municipal counselor, there is all but an admission. I mean, as a lawyer, I would say that it is an admission that the city did the damage. The city's not sure exactly when it happened, but the city has, for all practical purposes, admitted the damage in its memo.
Eric, we had a similar case. It was a garbage truck in the area, and we turned it down, and there was... The evidence there was no more convincing than what you're trying to provide here, or less convincing.
Well, let me add this, councilman. You know, under the doctrine of "race ipse loquitur," the claimant doesn't have to prove negligence. All the claimant has to show is that the instrumentality that did the damage was in the sole control of the person claimed against, and that these things don't ordinarily happen without negligence.
And you can't do that?
Can't prove that it would not happen without negligence?
You can't prove that the city did it. Now, the assumption is the city did it because there was a city plow in the area, but there's no definitive proof, that I've heard anyway, that indicated the city actually did the damage.
We did not have a witness standing there at the time. We have witnesses who went there after the incident occurred, and we have an admission by the city that it was their snowplow. I think that's...
Their snowplow was in the area, not that it did the damage, I think. And then, you know, there's no question that damage was done. I don't question that a bit, and there may be some basis to pay that claim, but I think the conversation we're having here is sort of dangerous in terms of what we've done before. We've turned down claims with the same set of circumstances.
Well, the council will either pay for the damage or they won't. There's a right and wrong to this. Very simple right and wrong.
When was the actual notice of this damage to anyone as it relates to the sprinkler system? You say this was in February.
When did we file?
How much snow was on the ground on the alleged date that this was supposed to have happened?
Well, the staff memo says there was a lot of snow on the ground that day, but I'm not sure that that was the day it happened. Now, Denise Waters is most familiar with the facts of the case. Perhaps she knows. You know?
So how much snow is there?
No, the day, the exact day.
Why would a snowplow be out in the area if there's not a sizable amount of snow that would cause a snowplow to be out cleaning the streets anyway?
Well, what I can attest to is that I waited until the snow actually melted, because when the snowplow came through, they piled up additional snow from the road onto the area, and so it took several days for the snow to actually melt for me to notice the damage. And also, your comment about the truck, if a truck came by... If a truck came by and did the damage like that, it would be more of a compressed damage versus a scraped damage. That's my personal opinion. Yes. Yes.
Now, that's the comment I was going to make, is to me, it's obvious in the pictures that that's a scrape. You can see where a grater has... Because you can see the dirt has been thrown back up on the side. If it was just a truck running over the curb, you'd see wheel ruts. You wouldn't see that dirt thrown up there. You know, I don't...
Not necessarily. With a foot of snow on the ground, I'm not sure that's true.
Your Honor, this is really towards Kenny. Is the issue, because I'm just not sure that we... That the city was negligent, but is that a requirement to approve the claim that we were negligent? Or could it have just been an accident, and we're responsible?
No, we have to be... Have been negligent. We do believe that this was done by the snowplow. That's why we make the statement in there. As Mr. Groves has pointed out, we do make the statement that it was likely done by the plow. As Councilman Mars has pointed out, this appears to be a scrape, and we know that a snowplow was plowing in the area. So we do have more evidence in this case than we do on the one that you turned down. Councilman, that's why we wrote it up, is reasonable minds may differ on this, so there's a conflict in the evidence, but...
And I would agree with the assessment that it appears that a snowplow did it. I'm not arguing that. I'm just asking the question. In my mind, I don't believe a person who have... The operator of the snowplow, who went up a foot or so onto the ground that may have been covered by both snow and ice, was negligent in operating that snowplow. Could he have made a mistake? Sure. But... And I guess it's coming from an accountant's perspective on what's negligence. If they do... If they perform it in a normal manner, using due professional care, not running into things that are certainly visible, like a parked vehicle, or a person, or a tree, you know, if they ran into those kinds of things, sure, that's being negligent, but clearing the street and for the blade to go up a foot over the curb, I'm not so sure that constitutes being negligent, in my opinion.
There is discretion on the council on that issue. Larry, you...
I just have a question. Kenny, could you kind of give instructions to the jury here for me? If I don't think it was negligent, then I believe I should vote to deny the claim. If I think it's negligent, I think I should vote to approve the claim. Am I on the solid legal grounds with that function?
You're correct. Okay. How about a motion now?
Can I ask one question?
All right.
If, in fact, the memo has stated that a city plow truck, tractor, did the damage, then why is it being on for denial?
The memo doesn't state that.
I thought that's just what Kenny said.
No, the memo... The actual sentence in the memo is... City manager pointed it out to... Thank you. This was likely the cause of the damage. This is on page two of the memo.
So our new standard is now if it's likely that the city did the damage, we pay the claim?
Likely means more...
And that's my question. Don't tell me what "likely" means. If "likely" is the determination, it's a new standard, we have to approve the claim.
No, the question is whether or not you think the driver of the snowplow failed to exercise reasonable due care to avoid damaging the sprinkler system. That's the question.
But the basis of that... Your question is, it was likely that the city was there.
Yes.
So our new standard is, is it likely the city was there, and did they exercise due diligence in performing their task?
Did they exercise due diligence in performing their task? Correct.
Okay. We have a motion from Ed to pay the claim. I'm waiting on a second or a new motion.
There is a second.
Who made the second?
You're the one.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to pay. Are we ready to vote? All right, so a yes vote pays the claim, a no vote denies the claim. Everybody clear? All right, cast your votes, and the claim will be paid 5-3.
And I would point out that if there had not been the ice and snow on the ground, we would simply have approved this for payment. I mean, if this were just the plain ground and the snow... I mean, if this were just the plain ground and the snowplow drove over it and drove over the sprinkler system, we would have had it on for approval.
The reality of that is, is that what snowplow is gonna be out scraping when there's no snow? I mean, I, this is, I...
But the question is whether or not...
My question is, when I asked how much snow was on the ground, clearly, we should be able to determine from all of the weather reports, how much snow was actually out there when a snowplow from the city of Oklahoma City was out in that area plowing snow. And if the snow was so high that the driver could not see the center median, then if it happened, then unfortunately, it happened. But I don't like the fact of putting the negligence on the head of a city employee who's out there at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, trying to do the best that he can for the best of the citizens of Oklahoma City. And that was what I was pointing out, is that, you know, if it happened, it happened in reference to an unfortunate, unfortunate, unforeseenable incident. But if the snow was that high, and it covered the center median, and a tractor is out trying to navigate enough to get people back and forth to work the first thing in the morning, and an unfortunate accident happened.
And that is precisely the reason we recommend, we recommended it for denial.
Let's move on. We're on to item nine. This is claims recommended for approval. We have two items listed.
Boo.
All right, cast your votes. Those items are approved. And item 10 is items from council. Pat, you wanna get us started this morning?
No.
All right, Skip?
No.
David?
Well, yes. I enjoyed the, getting to attend both the Taylor Park Homeowners Association last week and the Southern Hills Homeowners Association, as well as getting to tour the Oklahoma City Rescue Mission. That is a great facility, and I know we've had a lot of discussions about the importance of all the services we provide from the city, but that agency, as well as the other agencies that, that work with the homeless people, I think that goes a long way in making Oklahoma City a great city. And I just commend all of their efforts. Thank you.
All right, Pete? Larry?
Yes, Your Honor. Enjoyed attending the Windsor Hills Neighborhood Association meeting last Saturday. They had a great crowd. I'd like to encourage the neighbors in Windsor Oaks to attend their neighborhood meeting tonight at 7:00. And then, last week, I had the privilege of watching the Orchids in October presentation. Chief Mars did an excellent job reading, reading the citation. But just sitting there in the renovated amphitheater, for want of a better word, or music stage, and then looking at the skyline, and looking at the new Devon Tower, Oklahoma City has a lot to be proud for, and we should be thankful for the blessings we have. Just a great view and just a great hope of what the future might hold for our city. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, Ed?
Another request for the municipal councilor's office. I've spent the last week, thanks to Debbie Martin, reviewing the last 25 years of the city's employment anti-discrimination policies and the history of the Human Rights Commission. I'm concerned that there is an omission for sexual orientation in the city's anti-discrimination policy. We have anti-discrimination policies in effect for race, color, creed, national origin, religion, age, gender, disability, and political affiliation, but not for sexual orientation. And it's not clear to me why we have that omission and what kind of message it sends. I'm getting emails from city employees who indicated that they feel they are being discriminated against in the workplace. I don't, I can understand if it's grandfathered in, but I can't believe that in 2011, this council would endorse that. And so, I would like to know how we amend that to include with all those other acts that we can, that we could include sexual orientation with everything else. I'd like to hear from community leaders, and I'd like to discuss that in the weeks ahead. Thank you.
Okay. Gary? All right. And I'll just bring up, I attended my mother's 90th birthday party on Sunday. She's my favorite resident board one, and I know she's probably watching this morning.
Mine too, Mayor.
Happy birthday, Mother. All right, city manager reports.
We have a couple of presentations set up this morning. We actually have Doug Rex here from ACOG who's gonna start out and do a presentation on Clean Air Act compliance. And then we also have a presentation set up on the Bricktown Strategic Plan. Councilman Shadid mentioned earlier that we did have a, a presentation. It was supposed to have been the concurrent docket, or the consent docket, and we kind of went right over it. We got carried up with Mr. Ryan's questions on the, on the consent docket, and we did have one on vacant property. And if the council would like, we could do that presentation also, so it'd be the council's expression. And you can think about that for a few minutes as we do the other two presentations here. So, with that, Doug, if you'd go with item 11A?
Great, thank you very much. Mayor, members of city council, it's a pleasure to see you all again, and I appreciate the opportunity to present this air quality item to you today. You know, it comes with a mixed bag of things, this air quality summary from this past ozone season. I can say with certainty, however, that today is not an ozone alert day, which is great. I love this kind of weather. This is hockey weather. This is what I kind of enjoy. Even see the city manager has that winter growth going, so he's ready. But yeah, thanks again. And really, you know, when we talk about air quality in central Oklahoma, what we're primarily referring to, at least our problems in central Oklahoma, is ozone. And just a little refresher for you about what is ozone. It is a summertime issue. It occurs in, in, in the presence of heat and light. Need plenty of sunshine, need, need the warm, hot air, and, and little to no wind. And, you know, people always raise their eyebrows when I mention that in central Oklahoma, but we all know that during the summer months, we get those high-pressure systems that just sit on top of us, and it provides the perfect environment for the cooking of ozone. And, you know, it's, it's the presence of that sunlight, the pollutants such, that come from cars and trucks, from industrial sites, and what have you, that causes that. As far as the health impacts, I think this is well documented, the relationship, the correlation between air qual, ozone, high ozone, and in particular respiratory problems in, in society. It particularly has an effect on the elderly and, and young children. Particularly, the, you know, in both of those two, two age categories, one, their respiratory systems haven't fully developed, and the other, their systems are beginning to fail. So, on days of high ozone, you will see an occurrence of higher cases at emergency locations, and so, which is, which is problematic, obviously. As far as the repercussions of, of ozone, and in particular being placed on EPA's dirty air list, is that me? EPA's dirty air list, is that, you know, I'll speak primarily to the transportation sector, because that's, of course, what I'm most familiar with. I mean, it will require us to implement a number of measures to bring ourselves back into attainment, or to take ourselves back off the EPA's dirty air list. And several of those are listed there on your screen. This is just a, you know, it's a list, and we may not be implementing all of these, but I will guarantee that it will result in, in a cost to the motoring public. The last one that's there called conformity, it's a, it's a federal term referring to what we will have to do with roadway construction. We'll have to, we'll have to determine if, if a roadway, if it is to be widened, has a negative effect on the air quality. And if it does, then there's, then becomes a larger question or debate whether that facility should be built or not. Inventory, in central Oklahoma, our major source of pollutants come from, from mobile sources. Our cars, trucks, we all know, we love them here in central Oklahoma, as well as off-road mobile sources. Tractors, ATVs, those types of things are all included in that category. In actuality, it's two-thirds of the emissions in central Oklahoma comes from mobile sources. We monitor ozone at six locations throughout central Oklahoma. They range down in the south at Goldsby to our most northern site in North Oklahoma City at Oklahoma Christian University. That is the site that has been most problematic through the years, and as we'll see here real shortly, it continues to be the site that we're most concerned about. And this is not atypical for, for regions. The most northerly site with southerly prevailing winds is typically the site that has the most problems, because as the ozone cooks during the day in the, in the central part of the city, the wind gently pushes that to, to, to the most northerly site. The ozone standard is .075 parts per million. Probably not important to understand what the science is involved with that, but it is important to know that that is the standard, and it was implemented in 2008. And it, when they review the standard, they're only allowed to look at two things. They're allowed to look at how ozone affects public health and the environment. They cannot consider the economic effects it would have, or the costs associated with implementing the standard. So, it's strictly a public health initiative. And just because inquisitive minds wanna know, the way that it's calculated, it's a three-year average of the highest fourth reading at each individual location. So, the six locations that we have, we look at a three-year average of the fourth highest reading every given year. And we add those three up and average it by three to get the standard. And if it is above .075 parts per million, then you're, you're technically in violation of the federal air quality standards. And in this, this scenario right here, obviously, there would be a violation. Well, with all that said, you can see from this graph that really, you know, we are trending towards better air quality in this region, and there's arguments as to why that is. I would like to hope that our public education campaign that ACOG runs has some benefit to the region, but in actuality, it probably has a lot to do with, with the turnover of vehicle fleets. Cleaner-burning vehicles out there and what have you. But more importantly, the fact that we're getting some of the older vehicles off the roadway. And so, we felt really good going into the 2010 summertime, which was two summers ago. We felt very good about going into it, that we were gonna be able to maintain that, that the federal standard. But then EPA throws a wrinkle into this, as they seem to always do, and they, they talked about reconsidering the 2008 standard. And this is not typical. They, they usually, they have a process every five years, they review the standard, but it was not very common, a year after the standard was implemented, to look at this and reconsider the standard. And the reason why they determined that, because the standard that they settled on, the .075, lay outside the range that was recommended by EPA's panel of scientists. So, in their minds, it was not grounded in science. So, in other, so as a result of that, they decided to reconsider the standard. So, okay, so going into the 2010 season, all of a sudden, we weren't as confident as what we had hoped to be with, if they were just gonna consider the existing 2008 standard. And you can see from the, from the graphic that the, the range of the reconsideration was between .7 and .06. And you can see from this graphic, in, in from 2002 on, and quite frankly, we've never been able, we've never had a reading which was below .07. So, it was terribly problematic. We thought, oh, Lord, this is it. You know, we're gonna violate, it seems like we've been crying wolf for years on this, but it looks like it's finally gonna happen. Well, EPA, they were going to release their actual reconsidered standard in August of 2010, and that didn't happen. They delayed it till the end of October, which we all kind of chuckled about, because if you remember, the, in 2010 was midterm elections at the federal level. We didn't think it was gonna come out just before the, before the midterm elections, which it did not. Then they moved it to December of 2010. That didn't happen. And they were supposed to rule finally in August or July of this past summer, which they did not, and we'll get to that here in a minute. So, you know, 2010, we actually had a pretty good summer. And you can see, you know, based on some of the average fourth highs throughout, throughout the region over the last few years, it was relatively low. So, we felt pretty comfortable about the current standard, but not so much on the reconsidered standard. And then going into the 2011 season, you know, we were more concerned again about, about the, the reconsidered standard and what they were gonna do with that. And we just had a terrible year this year. I think most of you have seen this in the papers and whatever, but we had a, you know, a summer like we haven't had in a long time. And a lot of that has to do with, you know, with the hot, dry weather we've had, very low winds, and it just, you know, it just accumulated over the course of the summer, to the point where we've had as bad a summer as we've had in recent memory. And to look at that data, you know, this is, you know, a regional average of all of our sites, but if you look at the data a little closely for 2011, and look at the, each independent site, you'll see that, you know, the, the 2011 data at all of our location was well beyond what has been the, the average at, at, at each individual location. In particular, I would draw your attention to the North Oklahoma City site. This is on the left side of the screen. This is the one that we've always had the most problems with, and we were very, very worried about being able to maintain the air quality, EPA's air quality standard with, at that site. And when you look at this, this site, and you do an average of those three years, of 2009, 2010, and 2011, you will see that indeed, we did have a violation of the, of the federal standard for ozone at the North Oklahoma City site. This, again, the standard is .075 parts per million, and the three-year average at that location was .077 parts per million. And also, you might just look at, at the, there's three other locations at the Oklahoma State Department of Health, which is basically in, in the midtown, downtown area, and Choctaw and Yukon, that were right on the edge of violating the standard. In order to be in violation, you only have to have a violation at one location. So, obviously, we were then concerned with what's next with regards to, will we be declared non-attainment, as they say, or put on the EPA's dirty air list? So, we'll see. But just some additional information about this year, you see a bunch of red numbers up there. Those are readings at all of our monitoring stations within, within the region. This is the first time we've ever in our region, I've had red numbers for each, each station, one through four readings. We've never had this scenario before. So, it talks, it speaks to the extraordinary event that we had this, this past summer.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What, what is the effect of emissions in Texas, do you think? What's happening in Texas with these numbers this summer, and what, what effect do you think that has on us here?
It does have an effect, and we've, we've had discussions with EPA specifically about that. We call it transport issue. We, we believe, and EPA has, has recognized that a transport issue does exist from the Dallas-Fort Worth area in particular, that affects our ozone levels, our ozone readings in this area. We believe as much as probably 10%. EPA will not step out on that board and, and agree specifically with that, with that, but there is a recognition that a transport issue does exist. And if you look at the readings throughout the state, some of the highest readings traditionally, historically, have always been along the Red River, where there's really not much there other than the, the background coming from, from Texas. So, I think that lends support to our, to our case, and, you know, we continue to fight that. But of course, the problem with making that case is that then Wichita, Kansas City can make a similar case against us. So, you know, it is certainly an issue, and, and it does exist, there's no doubt. Just a final thought on the reconsideration of the standard. We have heard recently that EPA is no longer considering a reconsider, considering a reconsideration of the standard, primarily because, because of the, and what the president has suggested was that because of the economic downturn that we have, imposing these extra requirements is probably not, not the smartest thing to do at this time. So, they have stayed reconsidering the standard, and they will be looking at the standard under their normal review process for 2013. So, what really happens now? Okay, so we had a bad summer. We're technically in violation of the, the Clean Air Act for the ozone standard. So, what happens now? Under normal circumstances, what happens is that EPA would then designate this region as non-attainment, or put ourselves on the dirty air list. Well, yes and no. They are gonna go forth with making designations, but they are going to make those designations prior to the time period that states have to, have to QAQC their 2011 data and submit that to EPA. So, it looks like, best, best information we have now is that EPA is going to use 2008 through 2010 data. They will not use 2011 data. So, if that's the case, we will not be declared non-attainment. There's still a lot of discussion going on, and this actually, item was deferred from a September meeting, because we had hoped that we'd have some additional information to share with you right now. So, as... So as it looks, as we stand here today, we, it looks like we will not be declared non-attainment this year. So we have one more year, as we always say. That's it. That's all I had. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
All right. Questions? Yes, Your Honor.
Just one, well, two parts. If the motor vehicles are one of the largest contributors to our air problems, do we have any ordinances that are, is designed to fine or penalize a vehicle that produces an unnecessary amount? Because I was, last week driving home, I got beside a vehicle that was just throwing out all sorts of pollution.
We don't. And of course, a few years ago, many years ago now, I guess, the state discontinued the vehicle inspection process that they went through that is done in most of the states.
So outside of moving towards more of a mass transit type solution, there's not a whole lot individuals can do to address this problem? Is that a statement?
Well, I don't know if I would say that, Councilman. You know, ozone, it's an episodic event here. It's not, you know, we're not Houston or LA that has severe air quality issues, particularly ozone issues. We kind of, we have, we have information that we're able to forecast the days in which we expect to have high ozone. And on those days, part of our public education campaign, we call ozone alert days, forecast for the next day. And we ask people on those days, if possible, to do voluntary measures that would help alleviate maybe some of your driving, for example, like trip chaining, or, you know, taking the bus on clean air alert days. An opportunity such as that, and they're, you know, not mowing your lawn on alert days, stuff like that. That helps us at least lower it to the level that we hope would fall underneath that exceedance of the ozone standard.
On your public edu, excuse me, your public education program, do you ever suggest that on ozone alert days, people don't use drive-in windows?
We do, actually. Yeah, that's part of it. We have, we ask that vehicles, if they can, not idle on those days and not use, specifically use drive-in windows.
Can I follow up on what David, on our ozone days in the summer, we have days, I think, once a month where bus ridership is free. What do you think would be the impact if, right now, we spend seventeen and a half million dollars for our bus system, and we collect two and a half million from the public? What if you just went the extra two and a half million and made ridership free? Edmund did it, their ridership tripled. A, do you, I don't, A, do you think something similar would happen in Oklahoma City? B, do you think that has an impact on emissions?
Well, it certainly has a positive impact on emissions. To what degree, I couldn't virtually say. Of course, it depends on ridership. Councilman, I really don't know the answer to that. I mean, it's all about changing behaviors, you know, you know? And, you know, Edmund has had success, certainly with their express bus system in particular, from Edmund to the downtown area. I can't, I can't imagine that ridership wouldn't increase, and any little bit can help certainly in the long term.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Well, just bringing up Edmund's express bus service from Edmund to Oklahoma City, is there any thoughts about working together, say, with other communities like the city of Moore or other surrounding areas to work in conjunction or through a partnership to offer quick transportation to the downtown or central area?
I believe that some of the other suburban communities have been contacted on that and choosing not to participate. I know that we've had issues with, I won't throw out the names, but several communities that citizens have wanted to use our service, and we did not provide it because those cities do not choose to participate.
All right. Doug, thank you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Next up is A.J. Kirkpatrick, who's going to talk to us a little bit about the Bricktown Strategic Plan. Jeanette Smith's here from Bricktown Association, walking this morning.
Yeah, good morning, members of council. A.J. Kirkpatrick with the Planning Department. As the city manager mentioned, we are joined by Jeanette Smith in the audience, who is the executive director of the Bricktown Association. I'm here today to present a summary of the Bricktown Strategic Plan. This effort was requested following the completion of the 2008 Bricktown Parking Study, with the realization that we were approaching 20 years since the 1992 Bricktown Plan. This was largely informed by an interview process that we did in the fall of last year. We interviewed the nine largest proprietors in Bricktown. That interview panel included myself, staff from the Bricktown Urban Design Committee, as well as staff from downtown OKC, Jeanette from the Bricktown Association, and also the Greater OKC Chamber. One other point of business before I move on, I just want to point out that you have an 11-by-17 glossy handout with some of the summaries of what we found in the study. We did that so we would be able to address some of these slides faster, so if you want, you can review back to that for more details. Through the process of interviews and research, we aimed at the following vision. We wanted to develop a 24-hour urban neighborhood that complements the rest of downtown, capitalizes on existing and planned public improvements, and offers a mixture of development opportunities to its owners. So I call the document a bit of a hybrid. It's part planning study and part market exploration. I don't use the term market analysis, because I don't feel that I am a market analyst, but that's one thing that we recommend, is they may want to do some further research on that. In terms of the goals, we wanted to really hear what the proprietors had in mind for their property. We wanted to heighten awareness amongst the proprietors about some underserved markets that they may be missing. We wanted to communicate the banking community's preferences. We felt like a lot of good advice had been given to Bricktown in the past 20 years. We wanted to make sure that we had chronicled that in some way, put it into writing. And we realized that Bricktown is not homogeneous. We wanted to get into some of the conversations about how maybe East Bricktown is different than Lower Bricktown. Outline implementation objectives and responsible parties. And then finally, provide additional info and existing resources. We have a lot of resources already. There may be some miscommunication or disconnect in terms of how to best use those. So we, after following up with those, following those interviews, we came up with some opportunities and challenges to help guide our further research. I'm not going to read all of these to you, but I will mention the ones that are in bold. Clearly, we heard lots of great feedback about how Bricktown is the premier entertainment district in the metro region, and possibly even the multi-state region. To give you an idea, this is a quote that we got from one of the interviews. "We moved to Bricktown from the suburbs because we wanted to be part of something bigger. We wanted to be in the middle of it all, and we have loved it." Second, while we heard some concern that the quarter shore plan could possibly sap energy away from the district, we believe that especially with the recent recommendation to move the convention center north of Boulevard, that the area between downtown and the river will largely become residentially dominant in the future, and that those residents should be able to further support Bricktown on non-event nights. Third, stakeholders highlighted the significant transportation investments that have already been made in that area, such as the district's good supply of parking spaces, or the presence of the Santa Fe Station and the Heartland Flyer, as well as future investments being discussed, such as the potential expansion of the Flyer into Kansas City and eventually onto Chicago, the installation of a streetcar line, and the possibility of Santa Fe Station being turned into a multi-mode transportation hub. Finally, we were pleasantly surprised to hear a few complaints and even some high regard for the city's development review process in the interviews. While the interview panel did hear some concern about the speed of development review, we heard more about the fact that the design review process in particular is important. This is an example of one of the quotes we heard. "Design review has been around long enough now that I think most proprietors are comfortable with the process, understand its value." Moving on to the challenges, again, I'm not going to read all of them to you, but highlight the ones that are in bold. First, the interview panel heard a growing concern about the lack of development diversity in the district. It appears that proprietors in Bricktown, similar to owners in other entertainment districts in the nation, have realized that bars, and to a lesser extent restaurants, are relatively cheap to build out and are capable of generating a lot of money. And at times, the district has been accused of hitting a rut. Similarly, and more recently, the success of the downtown hotels has generated a great deal of interest in additional hotels, but the future demand is cloudy. Second, compared to other parts of downtown, Bricktown in particular has attracted entrepreneurs that made their money in other professions, and admittedly are learning development as they go. We heard this a lot in interviews. This is particularly troublesome, as many of the properties in Bricktown represent some of the most difficult development hazards, or development hurdles, such as environmental hazards and just the general age of the buildings. Third, the planning department feels that more analysis could be done to examine what different user, what different user groups want out of Bricktown. This is an example of one of the quotes we heard addressing some of those issues. "I worry about Bricktown. There's no commonality of goals amongst owners right now. It's like ships passing in the night." Another one from one of the local bankers that we interviewed. "Some proprietors in Bricktown want $80 per square foot, what is often unfinished space, but we just financed a Bricktown deal that was bought for $25 per square foot, renovated, and then sold for $85 per square foot." And the fact that this was a timely conversation, actually, Oklahoma ran an article on September 30th, in which they interviewed some local brokers about what they were seeing in Bricktown. This is what, one of the quotes I pulled from that article regarding the vacant upper floors. "When you try to sell for $100 per square foot, and it takes another $100 per square foot to finish out, the numbers are all upside down." So in hopes of building on these strengths and addressing these challenges, the planning department analyzed the district from a couple of different perspectives. First, based on some research we had seen in peer cities, we wanted to look at what we believe the primary user groups for the district should be. Again, these are outlined in your handout, so I won't go into great detail in this slide. Clearly, in the interviews, conventioneers and tourists, or what I'll call visitors in general, were identified as a primary user group for Bricktown. But we wanted to use the document to try to get the proprietors to view some of these other groups that they may be overlooking. So once we identified these four main user groups, we then looked at some national research on spending patterns of these, of each of these groups. And this is an example of what we found. This is the most recent. It's from 2000. I was hoping that we could find something more recent. But the Travel Industry of America Association did a nationwide survey of visitors and what they spend their money on when they travel. Seventy-seven percent mentioned that they bought clothing or shoes, whether on a trip, either vacation or business-related. Another 49% bought souvenirs, another 42 books or music, especially foods and beverages, and finally, kids' toys. The key point here being that we need to ask ourselves is, if a visitor that is coming to the convention center, how many of these things can they find in Bricktown currently? So returning to this slide about the other, the other groups. For employees, national data shows that lunch hours have shrunk nationally since the late 1980s. We're actually down to an average lunch hour of 50 minutes. In short, workers need more fast options, but not necessarily more fast food, what we call fast casual. So things like Panera, Cool Greens are examples of something that can be done quick, where you're ordering at the counter, you're not necessarily dealing with a waiter or waitress, and it's easier for you to get in and out for a short lunch hour. With each passing year, more and more new residents are moving within walking distance of Bricktown. While critical mass for grocery store is still low, and we hear that repeatedly, there is potential for additional smaller retail services that could be aimed at the residents. Finally, the UCO Academy for Timpering Music is in its third year, and attendance has topped 425 students, and is expected to reach 1,200 in a few years. This means that on any given day, there are over 200 students in Bricktown at times during 8:00 to 5:00, when Bricktown used to be a ghost town. But little new activity has sprung up to take advantage of this new and growing market, and even in its third year. Examining national trends, it turns out that college students have a surprising amount of disposable income. And in addition to spending on things like movies, concerts, and technology like iPads and iPods, they also spend it on junk food. So this is just, this is just a small example from the Harris Interactive College Explorer Study from 2002. Students last, in that year, spent over $3 billion on soda, 1.4 billion on bottled juice, and another 1.4 billion on bottled water. So clearly, when we talk about the college students and say that they don't have any money, that is a misnomer. We have national data showing that the college students actually have more disposable income than you would realize. So once we looked at it from that perspective, we also went back and looked at it from mix of uses. This was largely informed by our conversations with bankers. Following that interview of the nine major proprietors, they asked us to talk to three bankers locally, to get a better understanding of why they weren't lending in Bricktown. The truth is, they are lending, but there's a little bit of a disconnect that I'll get into later. So I will not go into great depth on this slide, but will summarize it by saying, "There's clearly high interest in entertainment and hotel, but surprisingly little interest in adding new speculative residential and office at this time. Talk of any future retail is stymied by too few housing units at the moment, few opportunities for cheap, short-term parking, and the need to create retail on a much more major scale than past scattered and piecemeal attempts in the district." This is an example of what we heard from the local bankers. "Once the currently proposed hotels are built," and that includes the Aloft and the dual concept that's on Sheridan, "we believe the number of hotel rooms in Bricktown will be sufficient for several years." This is important, because there has been some conversation about a convention center hotel, and we need to be cognizant of the number of hotel rooms we're bringing into the market if we eventually attempt to pursue one of those. Another quote, "Despite the ongoing glut of office space in the CBD, we see some potential for more low to mid-rise office space in Bricktown. Particularly around Main Street, it has great parking resources for office." This is something that became very clear during the Bricktown Parking Study. In the middle of the day, we're using our Bricktown parking supply less than 35%. So we have a great deal of parking that's only being used primarily on Friday and Saturday nights. We need to learn how to diversify the district more and to use more daytime uses that are going to take advantage of the large parking supply it has. This is the final quote I'll share with you from a banker. "If I had to rank my bank's current lending preferences in Bricktown, I'd say, number one, residential; two, office; three, retail hospitality; and four, restaurants." And the reason I put that in there is because I think if you interviewed several of the proprietors in Bricktown, their list would be the exact opposite. I think that's a key disconnect that we're seeing between the banking community and some of the proprietors in Bricktown. So through all that analysis, we came up with the five implementation objectives. We wanted to diversify district land uses, increase knowledge and understanding of emerging markets and trends, improve the experience for tourists and visitors, promote collaboration and connections between district stakeholders. And five, enhance walkability by encouraging optimal use of land and improving the appearance of the parking lots. We split, we came up with some initiatives here. We tried to split them up over the three partners, first being DOC C and the Bricktown Association, the private sector, and then finally, the city. We believe that the DOC C and the Bricktown Association, the private sector, need to work more on those first six. Then we need to continue to implement the Bricktown Parking Study. Two, create a more public presence for the Bricktown Association. Currently, it's tucked away in a very small office in the Red Hawks lot, or the Red Hawks Stadium. We'd like to get it out on, have it more of a public presence in a streetfront building. Three, better understand the market. Commission a market study, where they can dig into some of these issues greater. And then also conduct some customer focus groups with some, possibly some downtown residents or downtown employees about what they really want out of Bricktown. They need to expand the attraction options. We heard a lot of conversation, but little cooperation at the moment about doing more family-oriented entertainment options. I think everybody has a different idea of what that could be. It's a matter of harnessing all that energy towards a common goal. And then they need to continue to develop new special events to fill in and to keep some of the older special events feeling new. They should look at how to market collectively to attract tenants. They need to look at improving the canal amenities. The canal is starting to mature into a kind of a second generation of ownership. There's been a lot of issues brought up about how we could improve the canal. One is, we need to better define the access and entryways, particularly from Oklahoma. There's a concern that it's hard for visitors to find out how to get from the street level down to the canal level. So we think there's some possible signage and some, some new things that can be done to the stairways. They also would like to improve the canal's electrical and audio capabilities. Right now, it's difficult to host major events down there, or to even do some of the Christmas lights, because the electrical abilities on the canal don't really meet that demand. And then private sector, we ask them to initiate new development, to utilize the vacant upper floors and canal frontages, and also to broaden the dining options to fast casual. This is particularly important for the students that we're going to see more and more of. They're, they are on a somewhat limited budget, and they, they need places where they can order at the counter and get in and out fairly quickly. And then finally, we'd like them to improve the appearance of the surface parking lots. In turn, the city, the public sector, we're going to continue to implement the Bricktown Parking Study. We're going to evaluate some of the existing codes and guidelines. Some of the issues that came up were dog walking on the canal, permitted uses on the canal, and then also whether or not to allow street vending in Bricktown. We think it might be important to go back and reevaluate whether or not we should do the ABC three by right in the entire district. It's not a matter of removing it entirely. You could still apply for it, but we wonder if East Bricktown, the area that's largely industrial, if we might want to remove that ABC three by right, so that you might see some things like hotels and residential that may not want to be that close to a bar, but at least within walking distance. that may not want to be that close to a bar, but at least within walking distance. The problem that we've seen in other entertainment districts is if you continue to do bar after bar after bar, you're chasing away other land uses that are more sustainable. You don't want residents above bars, retailers don't want to be next to a bar if they're going to have to be cleaning up every morning after the patrons. So we need to be looking at that for the long-term sustainability of the district. Examine capacity for additional limited service hotels, given the need for the convention center hotel. Consider plan recommendations, and we, we promise we would consider plan recommendations and future capital improvement planning. Explore ways to buffer the speculative risk. Right now, there's very little interest in doing anything speculative in Bricktown with a lot of the empty buildings. We need to see if there's some way that the city can help to try to, to break down some of that risk. And then more parking changes. We would like to consider shorter terms in some of the parking lot leases. We own the parking lot in front of the Coca-Cola Center and leasing that. And then also, the parking lot to the north of the district is one that we own and, and we're leasing. We're leasing those for 25 years. We're seeing people now come back with development proposals, and it's quite a while to have to wait. Then also strengthen parking lot design standards. Right now, the standards aren't that great. We'd like to strengthen those. And then we'd like to explore the possibility that we've seen in some other cities where we require some of the existing lots to, over time, come up to those new standards. And finally, we would like to look at adding more on-street parking. These are some additional capital improvements I wanted to finish up with. This map came from the Bricktown Parking Study. The green areas on this map are places you can park on the curb. The red areas are places you cannot park on the curb in Bricktown. What we found in that is that less than 40% of the curb space in Bricktown right now is parkable. We think that's not correct for an urban district, a walkable district. In addition to that, you've seen some major retail failures in Lower Bricktown and on Reno, and a lot of that has come back to the fact that it's difficult to find short-term convenient parking. This is a quote that Jeff Speck, who did our walkability study a couple of years ago, recently said. According to the National Trust for Historic Preservation, each on-street space removed costs local businesses $10,000. And using very crude measurements, we think we could add almost 250 spaces on Reno alone. By comparison, if we were to put that, put that in a garage, that's going to cost, on average, 15,000 spaces. That could almost come to about $4 million. We want to look at improving pedestrian connections. This is Joe Carter, Russell, and Perry. We've heard complaints from both Bricktown and the Deuce residents that there is not enough connectivity so that residents can walk down to Bricktown. Russell and Perry is lacking sidewalks and lighting, so we'd like to try to address And then also, we are getting ready to embark on design work for the Boulevard, so we need to keep in mind some of the key connections here, that we need to make this as pedestrian-friendly as possible, and that we need to continue to push as many north-south connections as we can between both the Boulevard and the new alignment. Terms of next steps, we actually are not bringing the final plan to you here. This is just an opportunity to, to, to get some feedback from stakeholders and from council members. We will continue to revise the planning document, and we hope to bring it back to council soon to have an official council action on it. With that, I close.
Comments or questions on the Bricktown strategic plan?
Just a quick question, Your Honor. On the parking, off, on the street parking, were you anticipating that being metered parking or free parking?
Yeah, I think you could probably do metered parking the same as what we have in the rest of the district, and then currently it goes free at 6 o'clock, and I think that would help address a lot of the concern we're hearing about being difficult to find curb space in the, and also takes off pressure from the Lower Bricktown parking lot that's currently having to offer free parking.
Another comment you made about improving the appearance of surface parking. Did you have something in mind specifically?
In the report, we actually have some photos of, of one lot that's, doesn't have any fencing or landscaping compared to another lot in the district that does, and it really is a night-and-day difference about how much that improves the look of the, of the district as well as the pedestrians' experience.
All right, David?
Yes, I, I just want to express a little bit of concern, I guess, just reading the newspapers. Apparently, some of the things you've talked about as far as what you'd like to see in Bricktown, perhaps more retail, perhaps even more short-term parking to support the retail, especially in the Lower Bricktown area, is what one of the new businesses is trying to achieve, but yet it continues to be pushed off as far as the Bricktown Association allowing them to put their new business in place. It's the, the USA Screen Printing Business, the big red, or, you know, they sell T-shirts with logos and things. And I, it's my understanding, just from the newspapers, that that, the Bricktown Association is preventing that business to finalize its plans. And all I would say is, it gives the impression to the general business community, if nothing else, as to perhaps your area is more difficult to work with than what you may think there is, and I would encourage some type of solution to get agreed to. Russell, can you comment?
Well, I'm, I'm not the Bricktown Urban Design Staff, so I'll, I'll let Russell address that.
And I'm not meaning that any specific issues addressed, I'm just saying, this has gone on for a couple of months now. Russell?
That is the Bricktown Urban Design Committee, as AJ said. I, I think the media did a poor job of characterizing the discussion on that. There has been a consultation for a long period of time, trying to work with the, the proponent of this proposal to recognize what the, the Bricktown Design District is, is trying to accomplish, and that does not accommodate surface parking on such a valuable lot adjacent, in, in, in the, in the center of the Bricktown area adjacent to the canal. From a planning perspective, that's a really bad idea, but the, but the, the owner continues to go forward with that proposal, and the Bricktown Design Committee continued to dislike the idea. So that's, that's what's happening in that particular case.
Well, I don't want to get into a discussion, but it sounds like in this presentation, you're looking for additional parking in the southern part, and that here's a business trying to provide that to support their own business.
I think the point is that Bricktown is an urban district, just as the downtown core is, and that people need to walk, that you cannot have parking immediately adjacent or in front of every, or, or, it's surface parking adjacent to every business that's going to go in, into the Bricktown area. Otherwise, you have a suburban development, it's not Bricktown. The Bricktown image begins to dissolve, and that's why, that's why the opposition is there.
And if I could follow up on that, I think what I'm saying is, I'm drawing a distinction between off-street and on-street, and I think what we found in earlier conversations in the Bricktown Parking Study is that we have, by, I understand that there are reasons why we have Reno the way it is, because of the major events and the need to get people in and out quickly after those major events. But as a parker, your first preference is going to be to try to find an on-street space, and by not having enough of those, we are driving people into off-street lots, and we have created a very strong parking market because of that.
I, I think another point to, to, to bring up with the Bricktown Parking Study a couple of years ago is it did demonstrate that there is plenty of parking in Bricktown. It's, we're still running into the issue of people not being prepared to walk more than 100 meters.
But, but one of the reasons that you would want to add more spaces, I think, is that if you scatter it on the on-street, that you're actually giving people more options than, than a single surface lot.
Well, again, final comment, whether or not it's a fair or unfair presentation that the media is creating in this situation, the fact that the two parties can't reach a conclusion or, or an agreement, I think is problematic, and it tends to give the impression that perhaps locating a business in Bricktown perhaps is going to be more difficult than what your organization is trying to demonstrate. And that's all I'm saying, is I just wish the parties could come to an agreement and get it out of the media, and let a new business come into play and start generating income for the business owner, income for the city through sales tax, and, and let's, you know, find a solution.
The, the interviews were done prior to Chris Johnson's proposal to do the parking lot, but I, I'm afraid that the media has latched on to the negative side of that. In the interviews, we did a lot of discussion about the need for more retail, so the more exciting thing about Chris Johnson's proposal is the House of Bedlam, which is going to provide more opportunity for visitors to get OU and Oklahoma State apparel, which until the, the Bricktown Emporium opened, had been somewhat difficult for visitors downtown to find. So that is very exciting, and I, and I do hope that Chris was able to get the, the project done.
Okay. A lot of focus on parking and automobiles. It seems that the primary goal should be to get people into Bricktown without a car. And I, I, I mean, one of our major goals is the streetcar. I haven't heard any discussion about the streetcar. And I'm wondering how, how that plays into that, what impact you think that'll have on parking requirements, what, what you think about the streetcar's proposed route?
Right.
What, it seems to me that streetcar route needs to get to as much housing as possible. This, I don't know where this picture is, but it's very disturbing in terms of pedestrian connections from the housing. That, I mean, that seems critical, to have sidewalks and lightings to get people from the housing into Bricktown. That's the whole point of living nearby. So is there money in the, I know I'm throwing a lot at you, but is there money in the 2007 bond? Are we targeting sidewalks for any of these pedestrian, or any of these housing developments?
Well, let me, that's, let me, there are a couple of issues I want to try to address there. First, in the study itself, I didn't highlight it quite so much in the presentation, but we do talk about the need for Bricktown to evolve from more than just an entertainment district into more of a neighborhood, and that's what we've seen in other entertainment districts, is you need to eventually start doing more on your upper floors, putting in the office workers and residences that are going to be, you know, closer users of your businesses. In the early days, Bricktown was very reliant on, on visitors, on, especially on, on people driving in from suburban communities on a Friday, Saturday night. And what that, what that has created is a very boom-bust cycle, where especially prior to the MBA coming to town, they were having to make most of their money on Friday and Saturday night, and then they were very lean throughout the, the business day and then also the rest of the week. So throughout the document, we really try to get the property owners to start to see the value of getting more users there throughout the week, and diversifying and spreading out some of that business. So clearly, with each new residential unit, those are new users that we're trying to get them to, to understand that they should be serving. In addition to that, yes, there was a lot of conversation with Bricktown about the value of the streetcar. I think from, even from the Bricktown Parking Study and then some work we did in DSI, the Downtown Strategy Initiative, there was a strong interest in using Sheridan as a main spine to get people from the Central Business District over to Bricktown. I think that the current proposed route, in terms of analysis, does a very good job of addressing that. So you're right, there, there will always be, I think, a lot of conversation about how to get people by car there. But with each new transportation investment we're making as a community, most of those are ending up at the front door of Bricktown. You've got the streetcar running by, you've got a multimodal hub that's going to be right across the railroad track. So that is, we feel like one of the charges of the planning department is to continue to push that issue so that we can get some better higher-density development in Bricktown, and that it doesn't become a, a sea of surface parking lots.
All right. Skip?
With, with 90% of the properties in the Bricktown area owned by private investors or the owners of this businesses that are presently there, what is it that the city can do to change their attitude and their behavior as it relates to any of these issues? And especially as, if it relates to, to retail. I mean, as you look at Bricktown now, you probably can't find no more than 15 retail outlets that are situated there that is different than the restaurants and the clubs. So, I mean, with all of this, I mean, and I, I, I think this is very studious and, and interesting to point out the, the different factors that exist there, but how much does the city have as far as any impact on changing anything other than maybe the parking is reference to street parking? I mean, the city doesn't own a whole lot of property there, right?
We do own some key parking lots that we're leasing, but you're right, it is primarily owned by the private sector. So I think there are a couple of things that we learned through these conversations. In terms, I think you, in particular, are very interested in attracting retail. What we've heard is that retail is really secondary, you need to get more rooftops and, and office workers during the day, and it's really about building that density, and then retail will naturally follow. In terms of those other things, I think we need to continue to work with the property owners. As I mentioned, we have a somewhat novice development community, so there's a little bit of education that needs to continue to happen. Clearly, the historic tax credit program has been very important, and we know there's been efforts to try to get that continued. That's very vital for Bricktown. And then also, continued use of the TIF dollars in terms of working with property owners to help, and that has been used somewhat in the past to help with revitalization of old buildings. So those are the things we have in our tool belt right now, but the question I think that we're still working with is, how do we get the property owners beyond this speculative risk? One of the things that, that became clear to me is that we have a first generation of ownership that is starting to reach the age where either they, I think, have completed what they're going to do, and they, the buildings are basically where they're going to be. So we're starting to see the second generation, and it's, it's some of those new owners that have me very excited. I've recently joined the Bricktown Association Board, and we hope to continue to build that relationship and try to work more with property owners about what they want to do with their properties. I don't think hardly anybody buys into Bricktown just to sit on an empty building. I think they really do have dreams. The question is making sure that they know the appropriate resources and have the appropriate ideas about how to get those buildings done.
Thanks very much, Doug.
AJ.
AJ, I'm sorry. Doug was our last presenter. Anything else on the city manager report?
Well, there's a couple of reports there, but, but do we want to bring Russell at this point in time to talk about, Ed's nodding yes, or we are? It's a very short presentation, so Russell, why don't you go ahead? And this was actually an item to put out an RFP that was on the consent document this morning.
And I appreciate the council passing that, but I'm not going to pass up the opportunity to do some more education on this issue because I think it's extremely important. I did bring this to you originally, I think in March or April, and I know that was by Councilman Green and Councilman Shadid's presence on the, on the council, but since that time, the issue has continued to develop. Interestingly enough, Tulsa has a bill before the state legislature for this legislative session that would give them, or give anybody in the state additional authority to be able to acquire some of those problem properties. I'm not sure how that will go, but, but it is an important issue for everybody else. I did a presentation the other day, and the mayor and city manager from Muskogee were there, and they are also instituting a similar initiative. So it's front and center, it's, it's a major concern for everybody, and as everybody becomes aware of the extent and cost of the problem, they are taking action. Just to recap on what I presented last time, based on the information we have, we do not have perfect data, which is the point of this particular consultancy. We want to be able to gather accurate data to be able to assess how to solve the issue, or at least mitigate the issue. Based on US Postal Service data, which is not collected for this purpose, but nevertheless illustrates that we have a significant vacancy issue in the city. More than 16,000 properties that have been vacant for six months or longer, three-quarters of those are residential, and more than 8,000 have been vacant for longer than 36 months. So it's clear that those, there's not a lot of action to move those properties, and I do want to stress that with, with the intended program, it is not our intent to target those properties that are being actively marketed. It's directed at those properties that have been sitting vacant for a substantial period of time and are causing major issues in the area in which they're located. And there are a lot of issues, there are a lot of impacts. You have much higher crime rates that result from the presence of these properties. Studies in other communities have indicated that vacant and abandoned properties are one of the best indicators for elevated crime levels. In Austin, it's double the rate. Baltimore, they had undertaken a study to determine what that specific direct cost was for public safety, and came up with a number of about $1,500 per property per annum. And if we do a quick estimate based on just those 8,000 properties that have been vacant for 36 months or longer, and can do that same calculation, that's a cost to us of over $12 million per annum that are a direct result of these vacant and abandoned properties. So it's a, it's a very significant impact. Police in Richmond, Virginia stated that vacant and abandoned properties are the best indicator of criminal activity in the city. In Austin, again, 83% In Austin, again, eighty-three percent of properties that are vacant and abandoned demonstrate signs of criminal activity. It's also an issue of security. I've been trying to work with the local school district, I-89, in terms of developing a relationship there. And they did an informal survey of principals about what things would they like the city to help with most, and this relates to the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative. Sidewalks is one of those, clearly, streetlights. But another one that surprised me was these vacant and abandoned properties. It's a major issue for them in terms of generating illegal activity that scares their students and scares the teachers. Kids don't like to walk by these properties, so it's creating a sense of non-safety for students in these areas. So it's hitting home more and more clearly the more we delve into this. The direct costs that we're going to be mostly interested in, of course, are the police fire, code enforcement. I also believe that there's a cost there in terms of duplication of infrastructure for all that infrastructure that is not being taken advantage of with these properties is generally means that we're building something new somewhere else, so we're replicating that infrastructure elsewhere. For the neighborhoods themselves, significant issue for them, it depresses property values. I cited a study last time from Philadelphia, which has very similar property values to ours. It has a sort of wave effect out from those properties, but the ones immediately adjacent, there's a seventy-five hundred dollar depression in their property values, immediately adjacent to those properties, and it diminishes somewhat going out from there. But if you do that calculation on all those properties within the community, you're at a figure of almost one point seven billion dollars. That's not to say that all those properties would be returned to active use, but if you make a calculation on the basis of that, on the impact on our revenues, so sales tax and property taxes, you're looking at a net negative impact on, in terms of revenues going to the school district, of about ten million dollars a year. Similarly for us, about ten million dollars a year. So that affects the return that we get on our GO bond. Again, an extremely substantial cost. I think our existing tax structure is really part of the problem and is what has been driving a lot of this, a lot of this activity. The worse your property is, the more you are awarded in terms of lower property taxes. And last time I presented this, I presented images of houses immediately adjacent to each other, and in most cases, there was an average of a tenfold difference in terms of the property taxes that the owner occupied property was paying versus the vacant and abandoned property. So that owner occupied property is in essence not only impacted in terms of the value of their property, but they are subsidizing those increased services that we are having to provide to address these properties. I testified on this issue recently at the State House in regard to the Tulsa bill, and it was interesting because the fire chief was there from Tulsa, and he had pointed, he pointed out some recent activity that they've had in the last couple of years in one of the inner city neighborhoods, and he had a map there which illustrated a whole lot of dots on it in terms of the activity. They, what they're running into is because meth labs now are so portable, people are, they can take it into an abandoned property, they cook their meth, and they put it on a plastic bag, and then they set it on fire to destroy the evidence. That's what they were having to respond to was all the fires that would be generated by these portable meth labs. And it wasn't just in the, in the poor areas. They also illustrated a house that was equivalent to what you might see in Gladiot, Valverde, et cetera, which had burnt down and burnt down the property next to it. Property owners were on vacation at that time. Were not happy to see their house burnt down when they got back. In terms of a solution, what we represented last time in terms of the model employed by other communities that are doing this, and there are over three hundred and fifty who now have some system in place, vacant building registration systems, so once we get the information back from the consultancy, be able to identify how to set up such a system. A more comprehensive code enforcement, so it's a more proactive approach to code enforcement to support the actions on these properties. And then there's also a mechanism to facilitate acquisition of the worst properties, and that's one of the things that we're a little deficient on. They have land banks in a lot of other states. I think there may be some resistance to that, is what I got the indication from at the state level. But nevertheless, that's the sort of third ring of this. If you can't actually return these properties to productive use, then you're still having to deal with it. And while you can provide a disincentive by establishing a fee to at least recoup the cost to the city, that may not be sufficient in all cases to convince people to convert their property to productive use. So what we're looking at with, for the study to do is to quantify those costs to us directly, quantify those costs to the tax base, and those costs tangible and intangible to the neighborhoods. So we have a full understanding of what the impact of this issue is in this community. And we're also asking the consultant to recommend program options for us to be able to recover those costs and be able to reduce the vacancy issue. We expect that staffing that will be required to implement this program would be paid for through a fee structure that is determined by what the legal nexus is of cost and services, administrative cost to implement, to administer the program. So in terms of the timeline, we would expect this to be completed by early summer of next year, hopefully earlier. At which point in time, based on that information, information that is gathered, we will develop an ordinance that we will bring forth back to you in the fall of 2012 for approval. At that point in time, then we would ask for allocation of the resources also to be able to implement the program. And with that, happy to answer any other questions.
What is the Tulsa legislation that you referred to?
They have a, they have a bill which would enable municipalities to be able to acquire those worst performing properties, those ones that have, they have been, aren't able to rectify through other means. So you can't deal with it through the dilapidated structure program or anything else. They want the capacity to be able to acquire those properties and be able to then return them to productive use or to tear them down, whatever the, whatever the issue, whatever is the best solution that they determine.
And you testified before one of the committees?
I did. I presented the issue based on the numbers that I've talked about here today.
So us going forth with the timeline that you have set forward, that's not dependent upon the passing or the failure?
It is not. It will take time, I think, to set up, I mean, the first step of this is to set up this vacant building register, and if we can quantify the costs, then we can establish a fee system. We are, we can do that today. But we need to establish what those costs are to be able to identify what that fee structure should be. The intent is, this is a market correction program really, because we've got, the market is out of whack with this, where we're awarding properties who are costing us a lot more to, because of the services that they're generating. So it's to say, well, you can have a vacant property if you wish, but we would like you to pay the full cost of that.
So Russell, are you suggesting we impose some kind of a fee on buildings that have been vacant for some time and not actively marketed?
Correct.
And we can do that legally?
Yes.
Do you plan to have something ready for the legislative committee for us to look at with regard to what our legislative agenda is going to be this?
Well, I think, we're not proposing any legislative changes. You would need legislative changes in the future if you wanted to move.
No, I'm not talking about this program. I understand you can do it without it.
I think just as we would be offering support for the Tulsa bill.
That's what I'm talking about, is the Tulsa thing. One thing that I'm troubled a little bit about the Tulsa thing is, I like, is there a plan for what they're going to do with the property? I mean, just acquisition is not going to really.
I believe, I believe they thought that through, but I don't have the details of that.
It'd be interesting to know what their plan is because, you know, it seems to me the law, we have to get our arms around the problem, and I think this is a good start to getting that done. But ultimately, I think we've got to find a way to not only acquire those properties and get them or somehow motivate the owner to do something else with it other than leave it there in that condition. But we've got to incentivize the redevelopment of it. I mean, if we really want to do something about the redevelopment in the inner city, we're going to have to incentivize it. It's not going to happen without it.
I know, and this is one step in that process.
Right.
Okay.
Russell, question. We've talked in the past about properties that are being ready right now that are owned by people who live outside the state. And there is no movement afoot right now that I know of to address that particular issue within Oklahoma City. Is that a correct statement that you know about?
Yes.
Should we be looking at that also as a precursor? Because do not some of these vacant properties get in that condition because they have outside of state owners that we know about right now and we're having problems? We've not been willing to address going after them with any type of a registration system.
That is correct. We would have to, I mean, we have to work out the details of how a program would operate, but I would expect that we'll have to have conversations with the county because we've got to determine how, if those fees are not paid, we impose a lien on the property. The county is the one who's responsible for the collection of those liens. In a lot of cases, we're still stuck with the situation where the liens accumulate and they're not recoverable unless the property is sold. So there are issues still to deal with, but I'm certainly aware of the scar of that. That's the kind of thing that we're going to ask the consultant. How do we get around this?
Any other questions to Russell? Russell, thank you for the report, and I think this is definitely in the right direction for, at least for the number of properties that has been identified in Oklahoma City to make a change. So we'll look forward to the continued work in reference to this and see how it all turns out. See, do we have another report?
There's a couple of other reports in the pack, one on small disadvantaged business participation, and there's one on our police's success in the truancy area. You have to answer questions on either report.
Anyone have a question or concern in reference to the Small Business Disadvantage report? Or the truancy?
Certainly, the truancy thing looks like it's a program that's working well. I mean, look at those percentages of decrease in truancies. It shows that's a, that was a, that's been a good move.
Any other comments? We have, that's all your reports, right? We have citizens to be heard. Samuel Hill, is he here?
How are you doing this morning, counsel?
Would you please state your full name and address, please?
My name is Samuel Hill. My address is 12601 North Pennsylvania Avenue, Oklahoma City. I am one of the many supporters, including some of the other supporters back here of the Occupy movement. I've noticed that over at the Kerr Park, a couple of blocks east of here, showing support and solidarity for the movement that's going on in other cities across the country that started originally in New York City. I think we're mainly here this morning just to address the council. Mainly think about the fees for the permits. Didn't know, if you notice that in some other major cities, that some of the other city councils have under a first amendment rights waived some of the permit fees, such as in Kansas City and Dallas, to the organizations to allow them to stay freely in the park as long as they maintain, you know, proper standing in the park, I guess, really. I think some of the other people, I'm going to pass some of my other minute time to some of the other members that might have.
Okay. Could, is it Heidi Owens? Are you here on the same issue? Okay, would you like to come up? You state your full name and address for the record, please.
Heidi Owens. My address is 2329 North Redmond Avenue in Bethany.
Okay.
I'm here today, I'm a single mother. Sorry. Okay. I'm a single mother. I'm a missionary. My family has found its home in Oklahoma. I am here today to petition the city to allow us to remain at Kerr Park without permits or to consider waiving the fees for the permits. Would you realize that this was a condition of our being allowed to occupy the park or to remain in the park? And would you honor that? And would you thank you for giving us that consideration? Because there will soon be construction on the park from the, from my understanding, we may actually be having to move in the short term anyway. Some of us have been at the park twenty-four hours a day or close to it since October 10th and have every desire to continue to do so in an appropriate manner. There are many citizens that are concerned with upholding the law. We have cared for Kerr Park and the small community established there with great joy. We have happily complied with the city, with all the city has asked, and are most grateful to the Oklahoma City Police Department for being a presence to ensure our safety and well-being. I myself am in contact with them every day, several times a day, to do just that, to make sure that we're in compliance and that if they have issues with us, I can address I realize that the Occupy movement is misunderstood and under scrutiny, and we are simply just a group of people who have agreed to lay down our differences and try to initiate dialogue to affect positive change. This is an articulate and educated group of people from all walks of life, every religion, nationality, orientation, and we simply are standing with one another to ask this, to simply ask that you would consider the permit issue.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Benito Belsa?
Belsa.
Belsa? I was closed.
Just before, can I ask for clarification? What, how, what is the daily fee or how, of the permits? What is the?
Sure. It's set by ordinance, that there's a permit fee, and seventy-five dollars the first day and fifty-five dollars for subsequent days. And staff does not have the authority to waive it because it is set by ordinance. It'd have to be some type of ordinance changed to sound based such.
So they can stay as long as they pay the fifty-five dollars a day?
That's my understanding.
Just state your full name and address, please.
Yes. Benito Belsa, 325 Northwest 24th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma 73103. I'm here as well on behalf of the Occupy OKC Movement. I recently came back into the loop of what is going on down there at the park, and it was brought to my attention that there is a debate going on about the permits from people who support the permits and people who are questioning the permits. And ultimately, we would like to request of the council that the permit fees be reduced or waived. A lot of people want to argue that it's a constitutional right, you know, that our founding fathers wrote that in for us to be able to freely express ourselves. And a lot of people are arguing down there that this is a paid to protest issue, a paid to peacefully assemble for redress of grievances. And we understand the city's ordinance and its concern with regards to, one, the well-being of the people there as well as the well-being of the park, and we understand that law needs to be followed and adhered to, and that the desire is to stay within the realm of the law with this protest and not overstep those bounds and maintain the respect of both the community. maintain the respect of both the community and the city.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
It's Mark Falk.
Yeah, my name is Mark Falk. My address is 803 Northwest 32nd Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73118. And I also am here on behalf of Occupy OKC. I've, we've all been asked to address the city council by our general assembly. We actually have our own democratic meetings in our assembly, and we discuss these same issues every day. I want to thank you guys for that opportunity. First of all, I'm going to give you a really short information about myself. There are seven generations of my family that have lived in Oklahoma. My great-grandmother came here in the Landra, and my stepfather, who is the grandson of Quanta Parker, tells me that, well, when my ancestors came here, his ancestors were waiting for them, and that is a fact. Because of that, I, I believe that we, we all have inherent rights as Oklahomans. I believe we have the right to freely assemble. I believe we have the right to, to put out our viewpoint. I've spent the past nine years on a national level researching financial fraud. I've been to Washington several times. If anyone would like an education on how deep this is, I can give it to you. I know how our government has been co-opted by honestly wealthy interests, by Wall Street, by the 1%. What Occupy OKC is trying to do is, we are part of a worldwide movement that has now expanded to almost 2,000 cities. This really is not going away. It is the voice of 99% of the people who feel that they are not represented in our government and who can't pick up the phone and call their congressman in Washington. We do believe that we can make a difference on a local and state level, and that's what we're trying to do. Our feeling on the fee is that, a couple of things. One, the park was privately donated by, by a private donor to Oklahoma City. It is owned by the city. To my knowledge, though, it is managed by a private company. We think that it's in a gray area because of that reason, for one thing. Secondly, we believe that a $55 a day fee is onerous to our rights and our ability to freely assemble and our First Amendment rights and democratic rights to, to protest. We are not here in any way to destroy democracy. We are here just to represent everyone, I mean, the disabled, the, the people who are unemployed, single mothers, all races, all types. This, this is a fully inclusive organization, and we hope that we open a dialogue with our city and with our state that will be an ongoing dialogue and will give a voice to the rest of the people who honestly have not been represented in our government. And our, our belief is that we are, are different in Oklahoma, we are not Wall Street. We are proud of the fact that we have worked together cooperative, cooperatively with the city council and with the city, and we are grateful to you for allowing us to do what we have done. We, we feel like we, we do things a little different here. We hope to continue that, and we hope that this is the beginning of a open dialogue with the city so that you can see what your citizens and the working classes, it's not just the wealthiest citizens, have to say, and that we have something knowledgeable and articulate to add to the, the debate and to the question of how our city can move forward in a way that represents every one of us. And again, thank you for that, and we hope that this will continue in a positive manner like this, and we hope that you consider our request.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Before you leave, I want to ask you a question, or just, how many, what's the construction issue? When is?
There's an issue going to the Forest Commission this month or next month of using part of that park for the demolition of the, the Sandridge Building. Part of that's going to come down and be re, not the Sandridge Building, the building across the street from it. Ultimately, we have a one and a half million dollar geo-bond issued to rebuild and, and to redo Kerr Park and Couch Park that are adjacent to each other on the south side of Kerr Avenue, and both Sandridge and Chesapeake have indicated that they are going to also contribute some dollars for the rebuilding of that park.
So when would that take place?
We don't have a firm timeframe in place on that as of yet.
Not the next couple of months?
No, but what, Sandridge has positioned, has requested and asked for a permit to use part of that park for the demolition of that old parking garage that's there, adjacent to it.
Can, can you do both? Can you do that and have Occupy OKC?
I, I don't know the answer to that. We didn't know it was an issue.
Can you, can you pay, can you raise anything, I mean, less than $55 a month?
We have had people step forward and donate. I, I think, again, the question comes down to, if, if the fee were reduced, we would respectfully accept that as a, as a compromise, you know, we would rather have it waived. Any money that goes to that takes money away from our efforts to, to basically spread the awareness of what we're trying to do. And again, we are not trying to disrupt our democratic process, we're trying to find some inclusion in it. So, so really, if we are required to, we will find a way to continue to pay it. But it, it is very much a burden on people who honestly, many of them are poor and working class and struggling to get by, and that's the point we're trying to make here. That additional financial burden seems to be excessive.
How many people are coming? How many people are participating?
We, we have had a range, depending on the day. There are not a lot of, probably as many as 50 people on an overnight basis. We've had as many as 350 people at events that we've done down there, and it is growing. As I said, worldwide, every day, new occupations start, and again, I don't want this to be equated to be some type of an overthrow of the government. It really is just a request that the rest of us are included in that government as well, and I think that all of you can respect that.
One criticism of the movement is there's no cohesive message, but there does seem to be a coalescing around one message that we need to get money out of politics, that many of our politicians are bought, and, and that, does that seem to be happening on the public?
Yeah, I, I think that some of those criticisms have been that, that you'll, as you read the media, you'll see that they'll say, well, even Occupy Wall Street, they have 20 things on a list that they want to change, and I guess I would submit to that, that having studied financial fraud for the last nine to 10 years and talked to economists, I've, I've worked on documentaries, so I have a very broad knowledge of this. I found, as I researched it, that the fraud has permeated every aspect of our government, and there are the influence, so there's a loophole in every law at a national level, and everybody knows that. Those loopholes allow the movement of money from the middle class to the upper class, and that is what brought about the collapse of our economy. You can argue little things, but my point is, there are 20 different issues, but you're right, the overriding issue is that because of the undue influence of moneyed interest in our government, that the 99% of the rest of us, we really have no voice and we have no vote. And, and I think that would be, yes, the one all-encompassing statement that, that covers it all. All we want to do is open the process to become a part of democracy again. And once we do, then we can sit down with knowledgeable people in each field and say, yeah, the Glass-Steagall Act over here, or whatever the specifics are, but that's down the road. First, we've got to get our foot in the door, so.
Well, I, I don't think that organizing without a permit is acceptable, and I don't think reducing the fee is fair, that the city has costs. But I do, I also don't think you'd have trouble raising the funds, especially if you can raise some of the funds your own. And I'd like to meet with you afterwards, I think we can, we can find resolution.
Okay, absolutely, we would love to do that. We appreciate, and again, opening dialogue with the city council, and we, we thank you for giving us the time to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Ms. Fannie Bates?
My name is Fannie Bates. I live at 1116 Northwest 27th. When I went down to visit Occupy Oklahoma City, I discovered that there were quite a few homeless people that were staying down there, and I tried to be friendly to everybody, so I talked to them. There were two in wheelchairs. And one couple told me that the reason they're homeless is because their home where they lived in a, in a mission was bulldozed down by quarter shore so Devon could build a park there, and it was not replaced. Instead of, of replacing all the places where homeless people could live that were bulldozed down, the city participated in, I guess, in building a day shelter out on Third in Virginia. These homeless people told me that they don't have any place to sleep at night. Winter is coming, some of these people are going to freeze to death. We have never had enough beds for homeless people in Oklahoma City. And now, we have a lot less beds, and we've got a lot of people who are going to be desperate for someplace to stay right away because Oklahoma City has chosen to believe that giving them a day center is enough. They say all you can do out at that day center is watch TV. Homeless people need to have computers where they can look up jobs. They need to have three meals a day. The, about half of those homeless people I'm talking about are veterans. We need to treat our veterans better than this. The national media has been talking recently about how hard it is now for veterans to find a job. There are 16,000 empty buildings in Oklahoma City. You could turn some of those buildings over to churches and nonprofit organizations that are willing to provide housing for some of these homeless people this winter. If you have 16,000 empty buildings, surely you could set aside 1% of those, you could find 160 buildings that you could turn over to nonprofits so these people will have a place to live this winter. Thank you.
First of all, I would like to thank Ms. Bates and all the other citizens who came to, to share your concerns and your views. But in defense of some of the policies with the City of Oklahoma City, I'm going to take the time to say this, and that is, last week I did have an opportunity to tour the, the Oklahoma City New Homeless Alliance Day Center. And with that, I have to say that it's probably one of the best facilities that you'll find in the United States. And we are doing everything that we can to address issues as it relates to the social needs of citizens in this city. And that center has an array of different social services, agencies who have anchored their offices there and placed representatives there to serve the needs of individuals on a daily basis, from the feeding, to the jobs, to, to just life skills, and basically everything that you could ask for to help rehabilitate issues of individuals' needs to make them have a better quality of life. And so in defense of, of what we are trying to do, you know, it's, it's never going to be to the satisfaction of everyone, but it's a lot more and it's a lot better than it has been in the past. So thank you to every one of you. At this time, we're going to re-